San Mateo County Planning Commission Meeting of April 28, 2021. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Gupta.
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Chair Ketchum.
Here.
And staff is represented by Monowitz, Fox, and Montes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any subject that is not on today's regular agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. First, staff will explain how the public comment process works for our remote meeting.
Thank you, Chair. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period and for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise your hand and to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must await with my prompt in connection with each agenda item for those using the raised hand feature. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of the meeting for an agenda item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your microphone and begin speaking. Thank you. Okay.
Do we have any speakers?
We do not have any hands raised for this item, and I have not received any written comment. Oh, okay. Yeah. I thought I saw Fran Pollard's hand go up, but then it went down. So maybe we'll give her a couple of seconds to see if. Let's see. So once again, any public comment, please press star nine if you're calling by phone if you wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. So I do see Fran Pollard with her hand raised, so I'm gonna go ahead. Ms. Pollard, please unmute your mic, accept this invitation, and begin speaking. You'll have five minutes on the timer. Ms. Pollard?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, good. I was having trouble getting on. Yes, I just want to urge the planning commissioners. Thank you and good morning, all planning commissioners. I just want to urge you to please put forth requests to the Board of Supervisors to please take El Granada seriously on fire prevention, especially Quarry Park. But our whole town is surrounded by the woods and tall trees all around the neighborhoods, and we are in dire needs. This has been the, this is the driest year I've ever experienced. And I've been here fifty, I told you before, fifty years, 5-0. And, and I've never seen a year like this, and we're all very worried about fire. And I, I know Nicholas Calderon, the park director, had, had come up with a plan to put a fire break road all around Quarry Park that joins the community. And I would urge you to, to ask him to please do that. Governor Newsom's giving extra money to the counties, millions of dollars. And, you know, in the past, they've said they don't have the money to spend on that. But now with his money coming in, I'm suggesting that they spend it all this year, this spring, before the summer heat, and, and do something prevent, to prevent fire, not to prepare for fire. They're doing fire preparedness. I want them to do fire prevention. We all want them to do fire prevention. So please, please encourage, put, put forth a message to encourage that and say, we're, we're about the most densely populated community on the mid-coast. And, and if there's a fire here, people have big, tall, bushy trees in all their yards, and it's just gonna catch on in the whole neighborhood. And we don't want to see another community burn. So please, please, this is urgent. Thank you. Please say something to the board. Give them a message how urgent it is. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pollard. So that is the end of our hands raised. Chair?
Thank you. So we close oral communications. And the consent agenda had the, the minutes for April 14 have been postponed. So at this point, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Will staff introduce the first item?
Sure. We have item number one. Owner Judy, or owner is a 383 Arlington Investments LLC applicant, tentative design Pearl Rannicker. Appellant is Judy Horst. The file number is PLN 2021-00032, and the location is 383 Arlington Way in Mellow Oaks. And our project planner this morning is Summer Burleson. Summer?
Good morning, Chair Ketchum and Planning Commission and staff representatives and members of the public. My name is Summer Burleson, project planner with the San Mateo County Planning and Building Department. I'm going to share my screen. Is that visible?
That looks good.
Great. Thank you. Let me just show this here. Okay, great. So this hearing is to consider an appeal of the Community Development Director's decision to approve a significant tree removal permit to remove one seventeen-inch diameter breast height Spanish fir tree and one twenty-two-inch diameter breast height coast live oak tree. These trees are located at 383 Arlington Way in the unincorporated Mellow Oaks area of the county. The removal of the Spanish fir tree was requested because of its proximity and suppression by mature redwood trees. And the removal of the coast live oak tree was requested due to its conflict with plans to construct a new single-family residence on the property. The property is approximately 20,000 square feet in size, and it's located at the corner of Arlington Way and Madison Way, shown here. The project property and the surrounding area is zone single-family residential and developed as such. The existing development includes a residence and a detached cottage, which are highlighted here towards the front of the property closest to Arlington. These were built around the 1920s. There are building permit applications under review with the department currently to redevelop the property with the new single-family residence shown shaded here in blue to relocate the driveway from Arlington Way to Madison Way for a new detached accessory dwelling unit or ADU and an ingrown swimming pool and patio areas, including a patio off of the rear of the main house with a covered trellis over it. There are fifteen significant trees throughout the property shaded in the green dots. Five of those trees were approved for removal under a tree removal permit, and those are shown in red. And two of those trees are the trees being appealed, which is the Spanish fir tree, which is located in the Arlington Way right-of-way and the coast live oak tree, which is located just kind of offset from the center of the property here. So next, I'm going to just identify each appeal point and summarize staff's response as detailed in the staff report. The first point of appeal for the Spanish fir tree from the appellant is that the Spanish fir is in fair health and lives with redwoods as part of a grove. Disrupting the grove could have negative consequences for the redwoods. The appellant states that their arborist states this tree's growth would not impact the redwoods. And in staff's response, the Spanish fir tree is located here in the Arlington Way right-of-way, just outside of the property. The nearest redwood trees includes a redwood tree. It's about a thirty-inch diameter redwood tree located in the front yard area. It's approximately twenty feet away from the Spanish fir tree. The next nearest redwood tree is the tree located on the opposite side of the existing driveway. It's about twenty-four feet away from the, the Spanish fir tree. And based on an arborist report prepared by Advanced Tree Care, the Spanish fir is in fair health and condition. The tree was assigned a condition rating of fifty out of a hundred, representing fair condition for form and vitality. These images show the Spanish fir tree in the front here in each image and kind of on the right side here on this far right image. The tree is described as being one-sided and suppressed by the adjacent redwood tree on the property with not enough room for both trees to thrive. The adjacent redwood trees were assessed with condition ratings of seventy for the tree to, behind the Spanish fir, which is a rating of good health and condition. And then the next nearest redwood tree across existing driveway had a condition rating of ninety, which is excellent for health and condition. There are signs that its location, though, the Spanish fir tree's location to the redwoods has suppressed its growth, as evidenced by the one-sided canopy and the poor condition rating. And then the nearby redwood trees. While the concern is raised by the appellant that the removal of the Spanish fir tree could have negative consequences on the redwood trees, it staff believes that the removal of the Spanish fir tree would actually provide benefit to the redwood by providing room for the lower canopy to, to fill out. And that could happen relatively quickly. The second point of appeal is that the appellant indicates that this tree is not in the way of any proposed construction. And staff concurs with that. And again, the Spanish fir tree is located out here in the right-of-way and not in the, you know, building footprint area. Removal of the tree, though, was requested due to its location and suppression by the nearby redwood trees. And based on the tree's condition rating and the nearby redwoods and that the tree will be replaced at a one-to-one ratio. The Spanish fir tree was approved for removal pursuant to the significant tree ordinance, which requires one of a number of findings be made in order for approval under section 12,023 of the tree ordinance. And so the finding that was made for approving this tree is that the Spanish fir tree will be replaced by plantings approved by the Community Development Director. Moving to the coast live oak tree, the first point of appeal is that the appellant indicates that this tree is not in poor health and is protected by the county's ordinance to preserve significant and heritage trees. And just staff's response, just first is just that, to clarify, there are no heritage trees on this property. Of the trees on the property, they are, as I mentioned previously, fifteen are considered significant in size, which is essentially a twelve-inch diameter or greater. But no heritage trees, which, to qualify as a heritage tree, they need, the tree needs to be of a certain species and of a certain size. And so there are no heritage trees on this property. The arborist report does describe this tree as leaning and having fair health and poor structure. The tree was assigned a condition rating of forty out of one hundred, which represents poor condition for form and vitality. The significant tree ordinance was adopted to control and supervise the removal of significant trees in the county in a manner that balances individual rights to develop property, to enjoy private property to its fullest extent, and while also balancing the recognition that, you know, trees are valuable natural resources in the county and preservation and replacement of significant trees is necessary to protect, you know, property values, prevent undesirable changes in the environment, and just to, you know, preserve the and protect the natural beauty of, of our county areas. The ordinance, though, does not strictly prohibit the removal of trees, but again, allows removal in a certain number of situations as, as kind of leads into this next appeal point. That, the second appeal point being, on a large lot like this one, the developer should be required to redesign around the significant trees in order to preserve them. If there is room on the plans, in the plans for an accessory dwelling unit on the property, there should be room to preserve a significant coast oak tree. And the, looking at the site plan again here, the property is twenty thousand, approximately twenty thousand square feet in size here. It is in the R1S100 zoning district. And so the S100 zoning district standards requires a forty-foot setback from the front property line, which should be along Arlington Way, so forty feet along the front, forty-foot setback along a street side. And this, because this is a corner property, Madison Way is a street side. So a forty-foot setback from Madison Way. And then a twenty-foot setback from the rear and a ten-foot setback on the interior side property line. And so what you see here, the purple rectangle here on the screen is basically the primary building envelope, once you account for the setback requirements on the property. And so that's about thirty-five percent. It's a sixty-nine-hundred-square-foot approximate area of the twenty thousand square foot lot where the primary residence can be located in order to conform with setbacks. That's about thirty-five percent of the total lot. The proposed residence and the garage, detached garage and the partially covered patio outlined here in red is designed to conform to those zoning setback standards. The ADU, which is located off to the left corner here, is allowed a reduced setback of four feet from property lines. So it does not have to maintain the same setback constraints as the primary residence. With that removal of the coast live oak tree, which you can see here, sort of, again, kind of offset from the center of the property and a little offset from the center of the building envelope area. Without removal of this coast live oak tree, the building envelope would be further reduced to avoid significant root impacts within its tree protection zone. And so given the already reduced building envelope as a result of the zoning setbacks, the tree's location within the building envelope and its poor condition rating, poor structure, and lean, staff believes its removal is supported under the findings required for a tree removal permit with, contained within the tree ordinance and that this removal best balances accommodating development and accounting for the condition of the tree. And so the findings that staff made to approve the coast oak tree as outlined in section 12,023 of the significant tree ordinance, is that the coast oak tree, coast live oak tree will be replaced by plantings approved by the Community Development Director and that the coast live oak tree is, removal is necessary to utilize the property in a manner which is of greater public value than any environmental degradation caused by the action and to allow reasonable economic or other enjoyment of the property. An additional concern that was raised by the appellant is that we take issue with the developer's arborist approval to remove non-significant trees on the property, some of which are juvenile oaks. Where the young oaks are in the setbacks, these oaks would be healthier, larger alternative to county-mandated fifteen-gallon replacements. And there are a number of significant trees, you know, throughout the property, ranging in size from six to ten inches in diameter, proposed for removal to accommodate the development. The county's significant tree ordinance regulates trees that are thirty-eight inch, thirty-eight inch circumference or greater, which equates to about a twelve-inch diameter at breast height. So the non-significant trees are not regulated by, by county ordinance. Several of the trees are located within the footprint of development of either the house or the accessory dwelling unit or the, the pool. And, and several of the trees are also located along the perimeter of the property where ones, where they would be further constrained by, in, in terms of space from the proposed development. There are plans, although those trees are not regulated through the county, for the trees that have been approved for removal, the proposed development plan does propose a one-to-one replacement of all five trees that were approved for removal. And that's shown here on the replanting plan. The brown-ish dots are the existing significant trees that are to remain. And then the replacement plantings, as you see along the perimeter, are, will be, it's a one-to-one replacement. And it, they are, oak trees are proposed for replacement. So just to kind of recap staff's consideration in approving the Spanish fir and the coast live oak tree, it was based on health and condition, species, core structure, conflict with proposed development and health and longevity of other trees. And the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section 15303, class 3A, as it relates to construction of a new single-family residence. And so staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the Community Development Director to approve the removal of one seventeen-point-four-inch diameter at breast height Spanish fir tree and one twenty-two-point-two-inch diameter at breast height coast live oak tree under tree removal permit, county file number PLN 2021-00032, by making the findings and adopting the conditions of approval and attachment A of the staff report. And that concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, questions? Shall we start with Commissioner Hanson?
Morning. Just a couple of questions, Summer. So it's a two-story house to go in. It's got this defined footprint. If we wanted to save the tree, we would have to significantly move the house south-ish, because it's not due south, but south-ish. That would take a variance to get approved, correct?
If they were to, it potentially would, if they were to encroach into the setback to relocate or shift that house, it would require a variance.
And normally, we don't give variances for that.
The, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. We're very reluctant to do that. That's a really good reason for that. But even if we did, this is, this is a what-if. The subject oak tree has a significant limb on the south side. We would still need to lop that off. Then all the weight is, if, when I walked out there, is on the north side. And that would be, that tree would really be leaning. And I don't know if, but do we have any way of knowing that could even be saved if we did that?
I can't specifically speak to the, you know, kind of forecast of whether it, it could be saved or not. But your, your description of what would need to happen is, is accurate. And it would create further concern for staff as to whether even to save it, what that actually means in terms of pruning to the degree that essentially the tree needs to be removed anyways.
Okay. Show me where the new trees were, and you said oak, are they coast live oak, valley oak? We already have a valley oak there.
They're coast live oaks.
Coast live oak, okay. No more questions for me.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Yeah, Summer, on the, on the other trees that are going to be removed, the five trees, I thought that we had a two-to-one ratio of replacement. Am I wrong on that?
It's typically, it's a one-to-one replacement, minimum fifteen-gallon size. In design review areas, that oftentimes we do increase that. But this is a non-design review area, and it's a one-to-one replacement is our standard requirement.
Okay. All right. No further questions at the moment.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Good morning. Summer, I have about three questions that I am, wanted to share with you. One is, what's the percentage of the good condition rating for the, for the Spanish fir tree? I, I, you probably said it, but I overlooked it here.
Yes, the Spanish fir tree was a forty out of one hundred, which represents poor condition for form and vitality.
Which is the same percentage of the oak tree, the coast live tree?
The coast live oak tree was a fifty.
I thought you said that.
Fifty.
I thought you said the coast, the coast live tree is forty over a hundred.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I have the two confused. I have the two backwards. I'm sorry about that. The Spanish fir had a condition rating of fifty out of one hundred. And the coast oak was a forty out of one hundred.
Okay. And then we have a correspondence from Mrs. Pat Walker and stating that there's an Indian oak heritage tree in the property, but you are confirming that there is none in the property.
We have not identified any heritage trees on the property, correct?
Okay. And then if we do some variances, like we have done in the past for other properties, there may be a possibility of saving the, at least the coast live oak tree.
Well, I, I, I can't recall myself that we've done variances in this sort of situation. There are specific findings that need to be made for a variance. Typically, this sort of situation, it would be very difficult for staff to make those findings for a variance. And, and then just with regard to going down that path, though, if there were some sort of exception, you know, for trying to save the tree, there would be a pretty significant reduction of either the, the house size or significant encroachment Into a setback because as Commissioner Hanson mentioned, the the form of the tree is such that. It it would still require some pruning and again, based on the the form of the tree. That the pruning would be such that staff would have further concerns then at that point as to whether the tree. Could withstand the prunings to, you know, for its longevity to remain at the end of the day.
Okay, and then the last question that I have, Mrs. Walker mentioned also on her correspondence that. There is a swimming pool built right next to her patio. Also, I'm sure like. As a building inspection, you already took all the. Conditions and legality that would not impinge upon the privacy and the disturbance of the Mrs. Walker. Property or so.
The pool is located, yes, in the rear yard and pools require a minimum three-foot setback from property lines. And in this case, the pool is about, I think thirteen feet from the rear property line and three feet from the the side property line. The interior side property line and that is part of the building permit plans for review for all code compliances.
Okay, and then the last question is, on the Spanish fir three. We noticed, I noticed by your presentation and by the fact that the correspondence that I have read. That in reality is that the entrance of the old entrance of the property, the one that they're trying to change to another one. That is not impacted in any way on the project. That is sort of like fifty percent good health conditions and so, and but I I kind of like. Here, correct me if I'm wrong, that the, that the project architect or the manager saying that. They're trying to cut the tree in order to save the other two trees because of oxygen or something that it will be given. Because they're too close together or something like that. Is that correct?
The, correct, the applicant is, has requested removal of that tree, not for. Because it's conflicting with proposed construction plans, but because it's being suppressed by the nearby redwood trees. And although we were able to make the finding based on, you know, that situation for the Spanish fir tree. We have also noted that in reviewing the plans, the existing water meter. Junction box is located in very close proximity to that existing Spanish fir. And by accounts of our county arborist that even if no work is done to that. No significant trenching work is done in that area, there would need to be some, some work probably with the. That existing water meter box that could have some impacts to that Spanish fir tree as well, but that aside, that is not the reason. That we were.
Proposing to cut.
That they were proposing to remove the tree or that we found, we were able to make findings aside from that.
So the other two trees that are next to the fir tree are the same, the same category or different type of trees?
The two nearest trees are redwood, the two redwood trees. And there are, we have made recommendations that the applicant has. Will be incorporated into their building permit plans with regards to utility trenching and location. For underground utilities in terms of spacing away from those. Those larger redwood trees to minimize impacts to those trees that will remain.
Okay, thank you, Summer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gupta.
Thank you, Chair Ketchum. To go along the same lines as what Commissioner Santa Cruz was mentioning about the. Spanish fir tree. How long has that tree been there? How old would you say the tree is?
Oh, gosh, I, I'm sorry, I don't think I have. Yeah, enough experience to make an.
Sorry, but from the pictures, these trees look like they've been there for many years.
Correct.
Correct, right. Okay, we not knowing how long.
Correct.
And it has held its ground. Figuratively. There. And fifty per the arborist's evaluation of the condition of that tree. Is not bad. And it's not didn't in the way of anything and you mentioned the water meters and those kind of things. But that is not part of the discussion here, that that is the reason for replacing it or removing it. Yeah, that tree definitely. In my mind, feels like unnecessary to remove that tree. This is my opinion. On there. So going, going back to the other tree. Were there any efforts made? To save that tree in terms of redesign or having a design for their building? So that that tree doesn't have to be removed? Is there any effort made in that direction to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, there was, our county arborist has had some. Moderately extensive coordination with the applicants in order to find ways to preserve as many trees. As possible when the permit was going through, including the five that were approved for removal. I think that, and the applicant can can speak to this more, but the, I think with the setback. Constraints for the property, they, you know, their proposal. Took into account trying to minimize as many trees as possible, but I I do think that there was a challenge in terms of. The location of this relative to the actual envelope they had to to work with. And I know that they did look at options to reduce the the size of the house to try to preserve that tree. And they found that it would significantly reduce the the size of the house without needing to request some sort of. Variance to encroach into setbacks, which, you know, again, we've mentioned the variance already. But I I think that they had found that it was about a twenty-five to thirty percent reduction. If they wanted to try to save the tree and minimize any sort of pruning or so forth to actually. You know, have a chance of being able to, to save the tree and for it to, to have some longevity.
So in this kind of situation where the application. For a permit to remove the trees came to the planning department. Was there any neighborhood meeting held to inform the neighbors?
There's no meeting held for a tree removal permit. We do a, we require a ten-day site posting. And a, and. On a parallel track to that is a notification that we send out to property owners within a hundred feet. Of the property as well as interested groups, neighborhood groups for the ten-day site posting slash comment period.
Okay, so in, in this size lot, hundred feet around the. Neighborhood is not much, right? It, it would be basically homes right around there.
It does reduce, yeah, depending on the size of the lots and most of these lots are about twenty thousand square feet, so. Yes. The, both the neighbors and then the interested. You know, neighborhood groups are notified in this case, that's MOTA. And oftentimes that, and the site is posted for anybody, you know, passing by. But oftentimes with the notification to a neighborhood group. We see that they are able to, as they feel applicable, more widely distribute as well. The request, the notice.
Okay, thank, thank you, Summer. I don't have any question, more questions at this time.
Summer, could you put up the slide, the planting plan?
Yes.
I have some questions that relate to tree number twelve and fifteen, which are in the vicinity of this pool. And this relates to an email I sent out to the commission. Regarding severe pruning of. The trees on Princeton Avenue, basically everything facing the development was cut off and. So, so the two trees I'm talking about are to the. Near the pool, above it and and then sort of below to the right. And they have reduced root area protection because of the constraints of the development near them. And so my. My concern is, is that adequate? Is that root area adequate for the health of the trees? And, and then also about branch removal conflicts for the ADU or any overhang of the pool. I did note that the advanced tree care report had a, that this was number two, it says, any pruning and maintenance of the tree shall be. Carried out before construction begins, this should allow for any clearance requirements for both the new. New structure and any construction machinery, this will eliminate the possibility of damage during construction. The pruning should be carried out by an arborist, not by construction personnel. No limbs greater than four inch in diameter shall be removed. Now, of course, this is in the arborist's report, it's not in the conditions of approval from the county. And so. My request in the earlier, in my earlier email was, how can we, how can the decision makers? Be fully aware of what the real effects are going to be to the trees that are to remain. Just by what happened on Princeton Avenue and then my concern, like I say, these do have reduced area and there's been. Mention of pruning branches, what assurance do we have that these trees won't be really hacked up? Could, would it be appropriate to put that condition that the arborist, the applicant's arborist proposed? Said, he said, shall, no limbs greater than four inch diameter shall be removed. I mean. So. That's my, that's one question, one we got.
Yes, so thank you for the, the question and comments on that. So for, for tree protection, so we've kind of got, I guess. Two processes running parallel, so our tree ordinance does require a tree protection plan. As part of a building permit application and so as part of the building permit application, whether. An applicant is proposing to remove trees or or not and, you know, going through a separate tree removal permit. The protection of trees and the arborist's recommendations are required to be incorporated into. The building permit plans that get implemented for the project, so the, while. As you mentioned, you know, you don't see the conditions from the arborist's report. For the protection measures incorporated into the tree removal permit, those. Recommendations are incorporated into the building permit application. And plans that get issued out for implementation, so we've got kind of two processes working. Here, and this is not just for this particular case, this is the standard process for the department. That there are requirements under the building permit. That need to be met with regards to trees, tree protection, arborist recommendations getting incorporated into those plans. Before a permit can be approved and issued for implementation. And so those measures that you see, while you're not seeing them in the, you know, in the conditions. They are being incorporated into building permit plans and we are checking those plans. Our county arborist reviews all of those plans before they are. Released or issued for permit with regards to pruning that often needs to occur on project sites. Where trees are not proposed for removal, but pruning is necessary to allow accommodation for. Whether it's construction logistics or to help accommodate the, the actual. You know, development structure or building itself. Our arborist, our county arborist and staff is also looking at those situations. And in some cases. We are, where we feel it's, it's necessary or we have some concern about the degree of pruning that needs to occur. We have asked applicants. To provide some sort of plan showing, you know. The extent of pruning that is expected to occur to, you know, fit the. Or accommodate the, the work that's going to be done around those, those trees. In this case, the two trees that you reference nearest the pool and at the. Near the ADU. The, I know our county arborist has, has reviewed all of these trees actually. Very closely and gone back and forth with the applicants in coordinating to make sure that. Proper measures from the arborist report as well as additional recommendations that we've provided to the applicant. Do you get incorporated into the building plans to ensure, you know, the survival and longevity of those. Of those trees. And we definitely, you know, have had some discussions with them even with regards to. You know. Additional measures that need to be taken beyond the arborist report to, to make sure that. You know, the, the measures that are implemented to help save the trees are, to protect the trees. Are, are adequate and appropriate and are actually. Are actually going to do the job in our best judgment to, to fully protect the trees. So that, again, you know, they're not just protected for the duration of construction, but they're protected in a manner that. Best ensures their survival and longevity on the site.
So this statement in the, that the arborist has here, no limbs greater than four inch in diameter shall be removed, we can trust that.
Those measures, yes, are being incorporated into the building permit plans and so they will be part of the. Approved plans for, for issuance and implementation and just like the construction plans themselves. You know, the approved plans are what are to be implemented in the field, so yes.
Okay, then I just have, if you'll allow me, as a landscaper looking at this, I just had a couple of points. To make, so the perimeter plantings adjacent to the neighbors, there are. There's a laurel hedge perimeter adjacent to both neighbors and the, the laurel is robust. Tall with evergreen foliage down to the ground. For privacy, it can be maintained in a relatively narrow space that an oak tree could not provide. And, and I dare say. There's carbon sequestration going on in the laurels as well. However, the, at the end of the pool, the bottom of, the bottom there, there's a, I guess you said, a three-foot setback. Between the pool and the property line and they. between the pool and the property line and they proposing horse tail. And uh, the thing is, the horse tail spreads aggressively underground. And there was no mention of a raised planter to put that in. And uh, or uh, if it were in the ground, it would need underground barriers to prevent that from invading the neighbor's yard. And then my concern also is that as a gardener, it doesn't seem realistic that there's space to go in there and maintain this horse tail. Uh, so that's just a thought I wanted to put out there if the owner is interested. And so that's all I have for now and I I would like to uh, ask the appellant. If you have a presentation, if you would like, if you, how long you need? Ten, ten minutes, fifteen minutes?
Thank you, Chuck Hetchum.
No, not the appellant. The, yeah, the, excuse me, again, applicant, appellant. Want to make sure I said that right. Sorry.
I have no, uh, I have a, a written presentation, which I think all of you received last night. I don't have any slides or charts to show you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much and good morning. Um, I uh, I know that I've come before this group before and I recognize a few faces. But I, we're here today to talk about this particular property and uh, I wanted you to know that I think all of you know what Moda is, Menlo Oaks Tree Advocacy. And we're a group of people who uh, it's ever changing as people become interested in saving trees or knowing more about trees or better understanding your uh, the uh, the ordinances about trees. We're called and, and asked to uh, step in and several of us are more experienced than others and when we don't have answers, we uh, revert to the planning department. Um, I'm a, a longtime resident here and over time, uh, we've noticed that Menlo Oaks has been losing oaks, uh, one by one, as the neighborhood became more desirable for development primarily and for larger and larger homes, more barbecue pits, patios, et cetera. Uh, we know that each of you has a particular special, uh, many special uh, areas in your uh, particular districts. And that you probably have different trees that you're concerned with, but here in Menlo Oaks, it's the oaks that primarily we are concerned with. And um, I do, I have worked with several people on the um, committee to review the county ordinances. And I think we spent a couple of years going through the ordinances. And I do know that there are many people who are concerned about what's happening to uh, trees in the county and feel probably as passionately as some of us do about uh, saving more significant trees. After all, that's what the ordinances are for, but I'll get to the ordinance later. Today's hearing, we're here to, uh, because of several reasons. A developer wants to do what he or she wants to do on a piece of property. Um, the arborist has, who was hired by the developer has provided a report from all, for all of us to evaluate and question. And we're also here because the county uh, planning and building department shepherds this whole process through. But my questions are, and I don't need answers now, is that are trees even part of the conversation brought up between the planner and the developer? I'm not asking that because I know anything one way or the other, but we, our concern is that we think that buildings could be planned to utilize these great assets, which are our oaks in particular. And that uh, developers could be adding an asset to their property because the trees do provide a lot of benefits. The two trees we're concerned with today are these two that you've, you've gone over, Summer, and, and you did a great job showing us exactly where they are and what they are. Um, in, in this case, we were told by one of the members of the developer who we met with on the property after the permit was issued that it would be impractical, non-efficient, not efficient and not efficient to build around a healthy, significant oak on the property. However, plans are utilizing a large, older, less healthy oak, which is also rated poor, which will require a large investment in major tree care to restore it. I know personally that from restoring the trees that we have on our own property, that it costs a lot to create a healthcare program and implement it so that the tree can grow and become more healthy. It even looks more healthy. And we're so pleased that we were able to do that. But will this tree get that kind of care? Because who knows what the owner knows about taking care of oaks? This number eight is the tree I'm talking about. An arborist who walked uh, uh, the property with me told me that tree number fourteen, the coast live oak was healthy and yes, it did lean. But with thinning and trimming and removal of the other trees around it, it could grow to become an asset for the property and the new home. A healthcare plan would also be required. And I think you remember a long time ago, I don't know when it was, twenty sixteen, we came to you about the thought that healthcare plan should be put in place for the trees on the property so that we didn't lose more trees and so that the homeowners would be required to um, to provide the health, it's healthcare that's necessary to maintain these trees. He also looked at the older oak and um, and which is not one of the trees to be removed and said it was not in good health. We, we didn't do us an inspection of it or anything. But the developer's arborist said the valley oak number eight is in poor health and condition, decay and trunk leaning cable. I'm not sure what that last thing means, but maybe you do. Further, the arborist states, trees tree number seven, eight, nine, and fifteen are in poor health and condition and should be removed, but will be protected for the project. So I'm not, I can't remember the rating for number eight, tree number eight, maybe it's handy. But according to the developer, the home uses tree number eight as a centerpiece in its plans for the new home. We were told we have the, in, and we made notes during our little conversation with the, uh, with Pearl. We have designed the house around that tree. If the tree was gone, we would design the house differently. So if you could design a tree, a, a house around that tree, we questioned why it couldn't be designed around this oak, which has a higher rating probably than that aging oak. Uh, tree number one is a Spanish fir and you've discussed that very, very thoroughly. I don't need to add more to it. However, as a part of a grove of redwoods, it appears to be thriving. It's not in distress. The redwoods are not in distress. And I like the questions that one of you posed about uh, you know, about whether it really was unhealthy. I don't think it was. I'm getting something I don't need in front of me on, on uh, this about Adobe Flash. I hope you can still see me and hear me. Can you?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, that's probably my Apple reminding me I need to do something. Anyway, I think that um, uh, in our conversation with her, she did say that her clients are, uh, didn't feel strongly about removing this tree and are willing to preserve the Spanish fir tree, but want to remove the other four trees that were in question. We could not guarantee that we would not appeal them. But um, we think that maybe this tree is just, could be saved at this point because um, it, there was the indication that it wasn't as important to them as the other trees. Uh, tree number fourteen, the coast low, I, low live oak. Um, you saw the rating and everything, but there were two ratings. In one case, it said fair health, poor structure leaning. But in the summary, it lumped it with trees ten, tree number ten. And the arborist says tree ten and fourteen are in poor health and condition and should be removed. I, I'm not sure which way is correct, but I would be hoping that it was the one that said fair health, poor structure and leaning. And if you've ever walked through Menlo Oaks, leaning is sort of a standard thing that these trees do. So it's not a real good excuse for cutting, you know, taking its life. The developer could redesign the home slightly, um, didn't have to do, make major renovations to it if you decided that that tree was worth saving. Uh, so I, I do feel as though um, there is room to compromise here and I would hope that you can see that and, and maybe that the developer can too. Um, there would be no added, real added cost, uh, I think. And I, again, I go back to my earlier question. If the planning department urges people, the developers to design around these trees, utilize them like Eichler did. I mean, I'm living within five feet of three gigantic oaks now at, on my property. They're healthy because we keep them that way. And so this tree could be a real asset to that property. So um, I, I wanted sort of jump now to a couple other areas that I feel are important for you to consider. And they do pertain to this property. Uh, only the county has the answers to the question, how many tree removal permits are appealed or rejected? I don't know, but sadly, we imagine that very few tree removal permits throughout the county are ever appealed. Maybe this is because people don't want to get involved. They don't know how to. They don't want to mess with anything like this. We at Moda undertook this because we had a lot of people say, we're tired of losing oaks in particular. Um, so we hope that um, and, and I, I would imagine that very uh, few appealed tree permits have ever been supported by the planning department. None of ours, our appeals has ever been supported by the planning department. We never get anything but the urging for us to appeal and pay six hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-five cents, which we do rather hesitantly on some. And yet, we don't do it unless we really think we have something to say and that might be applicable to saving the tree. Uh, the planning commission has been more supportive of our appeals. And I think in, in light of what some of your decisions have been, we have been able to save two or three oaks and, and we're grateful for that. Uh, I don't know that any of our appeals to the board of supervisors have ever escaped that board. And that's a sort of a sad thing because it, it makes me wonder why um, have a significant, why have a significant tree ordinance if it never saves a tree? And basically, um, it doesn't, uh, it sort of indicates that there may be a system, systemic thing that needs to be looked at over the long term. And that's one of the reasons I would hope that um, this appeal gets you thinking about that. There are many reasons to protect a tree in the ordinance, but all it takes is an arborist to say it leans, has poor form or is in poor health. And um, none of those things are in the ordinance. It doesn't say it leans, so remove it. It doesn't say it's poor form, so remove it. Um, but these are the terms we've um, we've now come to use. But the um, other thing is that the um, I'm using my place here for a second, uh, that it interferes with the, uh, the economic uh, what is it? Reasonable economic or other enjoyment of the property. There, those seem to be the reasons that the county relies on. So um, and if it's in the way of the, of the, the property. So if the county planner doesn't ask the developer to incorporate existing significant trees into the design of the new home or new ADU, then the trees are automatically in the way of the building. And they are, they must impact the economic enjoyment of the property or the economic uh, impact. There must be an economic impact to the builder. So the tree thus is sentenced to death automatically through the ordinance. Now, you may not see it that way, but on our side of this, we see that there needs to be some care given to the protection of the trees. The last two issues, uh, I've spoken to you before about our replacement trees. And my question is, are we rationalizing that replacement trees are adequate replacements for significant trees? We know they're small. They, they take hundreds of years to grow, to become significant trees. And that we are all, also noticing that in these reports, the arborists are saying it's okay to remove these smaller trees, these smaller oaks, which could grow up or be transplanted even and used on the property. So we in Menlo Park, Parks are um, in Menlo Oaks though, are also concerned about the um, the fact that there was promised us a replacement uh, tree analysis report. And that was almost completed before COVID nineteen. We've not received anything but a partial report on whether the pictures from the homeowners were sent to the, the planning department or the arborist for review. We know.
Of course, I'm sorry, you have two minutes left.
Thank you. I'm almost done. You'll be happy to know. Uh, we also don't know whether the tree replacements are thriving. We have no indication as to whether they survived their, their plantings. So until we know the county is really taking responsibility for replacement trees, why do we keep saying and offering as a replacement for these giant trees, replacement trees? Why do you, do you think we should still be removing trees if replacement trees are not a successful way to replace significant oak? So anyway, uh, we're also concerned with tree protection. I was glad you brought up the, something about the size around the trees. The oaks have wide roots. I always thought you were supposed to replace, uh, protect them under the drip line. Somehow that shifted to a narrower formula. So we would ask you to look for that and also to analyze what changes we can make in the ordinance, which is still not approved and still, we're still waiting to meet on it again or to see it again, uh, to make sure that the trees have a chance against the developer, the arborist to work for the developer and any of us who want to just have a new patio. Finally, a member of the development, developers team wrote, I just want to say that your group's decision to protest every single one of the trees we requested for removal after the meeting or had on site significantly lowers your credibility in my eyes. What that person doesn't realize is that we represent fifty different viewpoints or twenty different viewpoints. And we moderate that as Moda. And we put forth their ideas to you because their ideas are important. We understand that there is, are there are people in Menlo Oaks who don't, who don't want any eucalyptus left. They don't want redwoods left. They want us to chop them all down. But Moda's objective is to look at the health of significant and/or heritage trees, which are to be protected by county ordinances without these prejudices or the prejudice that economic development takes precedence over the inherent value of significant trees. And I thank you.
Thank you. Is the um, is the applicant available to, uh, do they have anything at this point or are they available to answer questions from commissioners at this point? Before we go to, uh, do you know?
I believe, um, so there's a pearl, uh, Reniker. Is Summer, is that, um, that is the applicant. Okay, I'll go ahead and move her over right now.
All right, so let's, um, does the applicant have anything prepared or can we just go to questions?
Hello?
Hi.
Yeah, I'd like to uh, speak.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, great. Hi, um, I'm Pearl Reniker, the project architect. Um, and I'd like to start by saying that the trees on this property were one of the reasons the owners were attracted to the property. And actually, many of our design decisions were guided from the beginning by trying to preserve the largest trees on the site. Um, there's three magnificent redwood trees at the front of the site. Um, the existing driveway threads too closely between two of them and it's being uplifted and destroyed by the redwood roots. So one of the first decisions we made was to relocate the garage and driveway to the side of the house to improve the growing conditions for the redwoods and better showcase their beauty. Um, the Spanish fir tree number one is a relatively small tree compared to the redwoods. And its growth is being suppressed by the redwoods and vice versa, which is why we applied to remove it. Um, but as Judy says, it's correct, but the owners don't feel strongly about removing that tree. It isn't, I mean, as you say, it is not particularly in the way of uh, construction, but that is why, that's why we applied to remove it in the first place. Um, so moving around to the side, the largest and most majestic tree on the site is the valley oak tree, number eight, which we plan to retain. Um, the house is designed to keep a distance away from the tree, the side. Um, the, and one of the other uh, folks submitted a photo of the tree claiming it was diseased, which I don't understand. Um, the arborist did rate it as a forty, which is the same condition as the tree we are planning to remove. So they're, they're uh, the, that they're kind of appealing to keep and this one are rated as the same condition. But, you know, the tree was neglected by its previous owners and it could benefit for some careful pruning, like one of, they showed a picture of one limb in particular that that should be pruned. But I mean, it's a, it's a valley oak. It's deciduous. It loses its leaves in the winter. Uh, but in recent weeks, it just started to grow new leaves again. And, and frankly, we think it's looking great. So moving on to tree number fourteen, the oak tree that we are applying to remove, um, I did meet with I did meet with several neighbors on site, including the appellant and some of the others who submitted letters for public comment. And we had a lengthy meeting, explained our design and decision process. The appellant's just sort of asserting that with a slight redesign with no added cost, you can just work around the tree. But I want to assure you that we did look into this. And we, given, as, as you saw in Summer's slides, given the side setback, the building envelope is quite long and narrow. We can't reuse the existing house footprint because that was built before the side setback area is introduced. And the tree number 14 is located such that if we were going to preserve it, we basically could not build in the rear half of the buildable envelope. We'd had to reduce the size of the house by about a third. I mean, we can't wrap the house around it on the north because, I mean, once you get past this tree's tree protection zone, then you start running into the tree numbers eight's tree protection zone. And then you can't wrap around the house to the south because there's just not enough room after the tree protection zone. And a couple of the commissioners mentioned, well, applying for a variance. I mean, obviously, it's, it's not easy to get a variance. And then even if we're going to apply for variance, what you'd end up with is something like you'd have the front half of the house, and then you'd have a 40-foot hallway, and then you'd have some, you know, rear portion of the house, which is not, you know, a design that's very attractive to the owners. It's not very functional for a family house. So under section 12023 of the county's significant tree ordinance, it is a valid reason to remove a significant tree to, you know, have reasonable economic enjoyment of the property. And that is, you know, why we're applying to remove it. We, you know, do believe that owners should enjoy some property rights as well. But only donors have hired a contractor who's done several projects in the neighborhood and has a good record in taking care of those trees during construction. So we're hopefully, hopefully not to get tarred by the brush of other projects such as Princeton, which have, you know, nothing to do with this project. And we will definitely try to take care and preserve the, the trees, the remaining trees on the site. So thank you, and I'm happy to answer further questions.
Thank you. So at this point, I'll ask for commissioner questions to vote. Any questions you have for either the appellant or the architect? And then let's start with Commissioner Hanson.
I don't have questions for either of those two people, but I would like to ask staff a question because of what Ms. Horace brought up, and I thought it was an important question, is have we gone back to make sure that, that there's oak trees that were planted and replacement are thriving? Do we know the status of any of those trees?
Summer, if I, if you can add to this, please feel free, but I, my understanding is that there has been an effort made to at least establish a database of the projects that have triggered replanting requirements. As the representatives of Motor identified, you know, this has been a longstanding request. It's not easy data for us to quickly pull from our system. So we've initiated that effort and, you know, to the degree resources allow, we will, you know, do some follow-up inspections to determine if, you know, the replanting has been successfully achieved. As the commission may know, it's only recently that we got one arborist to cover the entire county. And so the idea of us doing regular inspections of replantings is just not something that our department is currently built for. I could understand the desire for that, but it's just not something that's reasonable at the moment. So, you know, I think we're, we'll need to think carefully about this in conjunction with the tree regulation update. You know, this might be an annual reporting requirement or biannual reporting requirement for certain number of years. Currently, that's not built in our regulation, and I don't think it would be appropriate to just tack that on to this project when it's not been required of others. But I think that's something that we could look towards for the future.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
No more questions.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Yeah, no, no questions at this moment. Thank you.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
I have, I think I have a question for staff and for Summer mostly. Thank you, Commissioner Ketchum. I, I heard there is like 15 significant trees and five are scheduled to be removed, but only two are part of this appeals. Can you, can you tell me what's are the other three, trees that are not mentioned in the appeal? Why, why we're not included on the appeal?
Yes. Sorry, one second. So the other trees that were approved for removal include a black acacia, a 12-inch diameter black acacia tree, a 30-inch diameter blue atlas cedar tree, and a 51-inch diameter aleppo pine tree.
Well, those are also significant trees, right?
Those are all considered significant sized trees, yes.
And, and the reason they're planning to be removed is because they're affecting on the size of the, of the building? Or because of, or because of any other reason?
It was, they were health and construction impacts, so both.
Okay, so then the reason we only include two on the, on the appeal process is because those are the most important ones?
No, of the five trees under the, the approval, and these were the two that the appellant has, yeah, has an issue with, correct.
Okay, okay. And then if we, in my point of view, I'm not saying that, that is, has to be that way. But I noticed that the most, more and more, when we decide to cut the tree, it's the three reasons that the, 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 the conditions stated that the reason to remove a tree, or not to remove a tree is just to preserve the beauty of the area, protect that property value, and prevent undesirable changes in the environment, and we're focusing on protecting the value as the most important criteria when cutting trees. So so having said that, if we decide to, if I decide to give my poll to approval, but keeping the, the Spanish fir tree, and maybe that's a question for Steve morely, mostly than you. Is that requires some kind of variance on the, on the description of the agreement or, or the approval, Steve?
I believe that this commission has the discretion to approve, partially approve the appeal. So to grant the appeal for one of the trees, but not the other. I believe that's within your discretion.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Gupta?
Um, thank you. I do have a question for the architect, Ms. Reniker. How long has the owner owned this property?
I believe several months, and they, they purchased it relatively recently.
Relatively recently, okay. And yeah, I think I read somewhere September.
I'm not sure of the exact date.
Yeah, okay. So, so the process that you, that they and you together went through to come up with this plan, what kind of steps were taken? I'm just interested in the general thing as to what are the things you focused on other than their enjoyment and what they wanted in terms of getting the neighbors informed about what you are doing? And anything else?
Well, we met at the site to, you know, look at the site and, you know, see what the, you look at the trees, look at the neighborhood, see how those would fit into the neighborhood. You know, discuss the owner's goals. The building envelope was fairly restrictive, so that, that was a significant constraint. And the trees also posed a significant constraint. And we had the, we had one meeting with the neighbors on site.
Okay. I was kind of disturbed by some of the comments that one of the neighbors has made about the insensitivity of the developer. I, I don't remember any names there. So I kind of felt that they should be sensitive towards what they are saying to the neighbors who've lived there for many, many years and are so emotionally tied to maintaining those trees. I can understand, on one hand, for fire prevention, we are removing so many trees, okay? But on the other hand, to keep the, what do you say? I, I wouldn't just say property values, but just the value of the neighborhood. They want to save the trees. They've enjoyed them. They have many, many, many reasons for why they do that. Okay, so, so you already met with the neighbors and kind of satisfied them with your answers? Did you feel that?
Well, obviously, they weren't satisfied with our answers.
No, but they satisfied.
I tried to just satisfy them, but I, I clearly did not succeed in that.
Okay.
I mean, at some point, there's the, you know, trade-off between, you know, the property rights of the owner versus the rights of enjoyment of the neighbors. I mean, we did, as I said, we did make a quite a good, I feel that we made a good faith attempt to, to preserve the trees on the side as best we could. This one tree, as I said, the, the tree, the oak tree number 14 is right in the middle of, of the building envelope, and it's extremely difficult to design around.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so, so I'd ask you the same question. I think I already asked Summers on that is that were attempts made, you may have already to some extent answered that, were, were some attempts made to work around this tree number 14, the live oak?
Yes, as I described, we did consider trying to work around it. But like due to the, the number of factors are that the building envelope is very narrow. And so it, this tree is also relatively near to tree number eight, which is the largest, by far the largest oak tree on the property and one that we are working around to preserve. And then there's the side setback. I mean, we don't want it. I mean, we're not allowed to because of the zoning codes. But we wouldn't want to build, you know, try to build right up to the fence either. That wouldn't be good for that neighbor on that side. So those sort of combination of factors make it extremely difficult to build around the tree.
Okay. I, the other question, there was one of the neighbors who's close to the pool had a concern that it's too close to the, to their side or whatever reason, and should be built on the other side. Was that a plan also? Looked at, considered? Was there a possibility of that?
Um, well, we did discuss that with the owners, but the owners, I mean, it is, the county does allow the pools in the rear yards, and the owners really wanted to keep it in that location.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm not asking whether the neighbor was unhappy or not. I'm just asking if, if that was part of the consideration.
Yeah, I mean, we, I did, I did discuss that feedback with owners.
Okay, okay. Okay, I don't have any more questions. Thank you for answering my question.
Okay, now I'll open public comment, and I will turn this portion over to staff.
Thank you, Chair. I do want to point out that Judy Horst has her hand up. So I want to give her opportunity to say something before we open public comment. I'll leave it up to you.
Does anyone have any more questions for Judy Horst?
Okay, I can talk now.
Okay, just quickly, please.
Yes, what I was going to say, two things. The meeting with the representative from the owners took place after we received the information about removing the trees and before our appeal. It would have been nice to have talked with the owner prior to that, and that would have maybe forestalled some of this. Secondly, I had a question for Steve Monowitz because I believe our committee or that worked on the ordinance was shown a preliminary draft of some information on the tree replacement study that had been conducted by an intern or someone who moved to, or a staffer who had moved to Canopy. And I was wondering if that report had ever been updated because that might have been hard to do during COVID, but the, did you receive pictures? Because the pictures were to be submitted to you of the replacement trees. And that's the information. We never received anything about whether trees were actually replaced and pictures were sent to you.
I don't know the answer to that. I, I think where you last left off is with the draft document is likely where it currently stands. But I will look into that and be happy to update the commissioners.
Thank you.
As well as Moda.
Okay, Jennifer, we start us off with public comment.
Yes, thank you. We're now opening public comment for agenda item number one. If your hand is raised, your name will be called for this item. I will lower your hand after you speak. Those joining by telephone can press star nine to raise and unraise your hand. See, now we'll go on and have our first speaker be Ramona Murray. So one second while I put out my timer. And Ramona, please accept this invitation. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking. You will have five minutes.
Hi, this is Ramona Murray, but first I'm going to have two speakers. Mary Ann Cormac is here with me via Zoom. Go ahead. Oh, so I'll go first. Good morning. My husband and I live at 398 Menlo Oaks Drive, and we share a long back fence with the property being developed. We've lived here many years, my husband for 55 and I for 30. We will be negatively impacted by this development in several ways, as has been discussed. As has been discussed, the plans call for the pool and ADU to be placed right up against our back property line. We spend many hours enjoying the peace and quiet of our backyard, and we're concerned by this impact. We requested that the developer consider moving these, but as you know, they were not sympathetic. I would like you to, at a minimum, stipulate that any pruning of the trees that are done to accommodate the pool be done by an arborist with our consent. One of those trees, number 12, has significant overhang over our house, and we do not want it to be hacked up by inexperienced, unqualified people. We are also profoundly concerned that, by the fact that we as taxpaying property owners, to our knowledge, were not represented by the county arborist at the onset of the permit process. We're gravely concerned that the developer has shown that it cannot be trusted. As an example, in a conference with her, we asked Ms. Reniker if she were aware that tree protection must extend to the drip line. And she replied, quote, "In general, but in some areas, the arborist is willing to, you know, work with us to slightly reduce the areas." Well, needless to say, that's not the intent of an ordinance. She also said, quote, "We are removing trees because we own the property and we want to make use of the property." Well, so much for the design companies' claim that their focus is on, quote, "sustainable residential design that intensifies connections with the surrounding ecosystem," unquote. And astonishingly, she also actually said, well, just think about the larger picture. That one tree is And astonishingly, she also actually said, "Well, just think about the larger picture. That one tree is really not that significant." Well, every tree is significant to our neighborhood and deserves to be protected under the law. So, given the attitudes of the designer that portend a disregard for our heritage trees and the rules that protect them, I would urge the county officials to deny the permit to remove the coastal live oak number fourteen. And I further urge the planning and building department to be very vigilant in monitoring the developer and the builder for violations of our ordinances as the project proceeds. Too often, we've seen blatant disregard for these trees. And too often, such things as bulldozers are parked right next to and under the trees. The designer has already admitted to a willingness to violate protection ordinance. So in conclusion, there are ordinances in place to protect the trees and it's the county's responsibility to make sure the ordinance or ordinances are applied in favor of the trees, not to accommodate developers. So I thank you for your time and hope that at a minimum, we can stipulate that pruning be done by qualified arborists. Thank you very much.
For your comment, I'll now give Ramona five minutes so she can begin her comment.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you commissioners for allowing this process to go forward. The county, it's appreciated by the neighbors. I live two doors down from this property. Mr. Brown was the former owner whose wife grew up at that property. So the, the neglect of the property is definitely of the trees, the planting of, or the, the pruning of the trees. The neglect that has happened over the last thirty years is very significant and that is one reason why some of these trees that have been applied for are not being appealed. Because they are in poor health and the neighbors recognize that it is a difficult lot to develop. But if you look at the trees that are being removed, they are in the setback. We are going to lose a huge canopy if, if any of the commissioners had walked the property, which I believe a couple of you have. We're losing a huge canopy. But the neighbors are mainly concerned with the trees that could be designed around. These trees have been there for at least fifty, if not more, years growing on this property. And I believe that a developer should take the time to to take their blank piece of paper and design around the trees. And if that means applying for a variance, there is no reason why that process should not go forward before we consider taking out significant trees. On tree number one, the Spanish fir, I believe, is, is, that tree is rated as fair. And one of the reasons that tree has not done well is because of how close it is to the driveway. Once that driveway is removed, there is an opportunity for both the redwood that is in cork or fair condition and the other tree to get more oxygen, to have more of an opportunity to thrive. This is a public tree. It is in the public right of way. Tree number one, there is no significant reason to move it other than it is not desirable. Well, if we allow people to remove undesirable trees and that be the reason for moving an, a tree, how and why are we having a significant tree ordinance? And there's no reason why, if you have a blank piece of paper, that you cannot at least try to save this number fourteen oak. So I, I do ask the planning commission to consider the care plan for the tree number twelve that is near the neighbor, Mary Ann Cormack, very concerned as it is over their tree, over their garage, that a tree surgeon should be the one who decides the protection zone rather than on the arborist of record. I think that the neighbors on these significant trees that are going to be impacted by the pool should have a say on the safety of the work that's being done. And I thank the commission for their time.
Thanks for your comment. I will next call on Anne Cortlander. Ms. Cortlander, please accept this invitation. Unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, I believe that the commissioners have my little presentation. And my main focus is on this tree number one, which is the healthy Spanish fir. I've lived in this neighborhood for over thirty years and have, at least on a weekly basis, walked by this property and enjoyed the range of trees that are on Arlington Way. And it's a little grove of trees. And this Spanish fir, which is at the end, over by the mailbox, on the left-hand side of the picture that is on slide number one, is in fair health and as everyone says, there's no risk-related or health reason to remove it. And so from that perspective, so often we hear that trees are sick or that, but even as Commissioner Gupta said earlier, the redwoods are doing great with the tree there and the tree itself has grown very straight into the air and is very green and bushy, has lovely little pine cones on it. So there's really no health or risk-related reason to remove this. Um, Janice, could you go to my next slide, please? So.
Sorry, so the commission did receive your information yesterday. However, I don't have it pulled up.
Oh, okay, that's fine. Well, anyway, I'm just on to the next slide for those of you who are following along. So the, the next point I want to make, and I, and I believe that actually the designer Pearl made that point herself, is that this Spanish fir tree number one is not really in the way of any of the construction. Yes, there may be some hand trenching that needs to be done because of the water meter. But quite frankly, preserving this tree does not result in any economic loss for the property owner. And so that being one of the main reasons that often these trees are removed for, are, are approved for removal, I just don't see the point of removing this tree in terms of dollars and cents. Um, then my next point has to do with the fact that it is part of this lovely grove of trees. And as I said at the beginning, as a person who walks through the neighborhood, this, there's this lovely stretch of trees at this corner of Madison Way and Arlington that's been there for, well, at least the last thirty-plus years that I've been walking by. And the Spanish fir essentially is part of the grove and complements the stretch of trees that you see there. And we know that the county tree regulations actually strongly discourage disrupting a grove of trees. And because this tree has been growing there so long, both its roots as well as its branches are intertwined with the redwoods. And it will in fact do better, as Ramona just mentioned, once the old asphalt from that driveway is removed. And again, I just underline the neighborhood effect, right? That this is a classic case of public good versus personal gain or personal liberty, if you will, that this, all these trees, whether they're the oaks that so many of us care about, but also the redwoods and the other large trees that we have in our neighborhood, that makes this Menlo Oaks a special and a valuable place. People move to this neighborhood because of the trees. And lastly, on my last slide, I want to make the point about what this tree does versus any small replacement tree. You know, when, when I looked up the whole scene about carbon sequestration and greenhouse gas emissions, you know, a mature tree like this sequesters approximately forty-eight pounds of carbon dioxide a year. Any of these small replacement trees, which are part of the county regulations, the fifteen gallon replacement trees, only sequesters at best thirty percent of that. And it takes many, many years to grow into this type of tree with the kind of greenness in the leaves that this fir tree has to even get close to this forty-eight pounds of carbon dioxide sequestration. And it is really important when we think about the removal of these trees to think about them in that larger context. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will next call on, and on Andy Kay, followed by Pat Walker. Andy, please accept this invitation. Unmute your mic and you can begin speaking.
Thank you and good morning. Uh, first off, I'd like to say I've been involved with several development and builds in the Menlo Oaks neighborhood and have great experience in the very recent years. I'd like to say that all those projects have been very, very successful with taking care of the tree health of existing trees that had stayed and also the, the thriving of the new replacement trees. Therefore, this, this owner and client of this particular property reached out to us to work with them in regards to this property. We started working with them and the attraction to the property was the beautiful redwoods and all the other trees. Certainly, the immediate thing we planned for before we put anything down on paper is how do we work around the beautiful trees that are here? And that certainly, we take a lot of consideration prior to speaking with neighbors, with Mota and anybody else, again, knowing the significance of Menlo Oaks and this neighborhood and its trees. So I think just a lot of emotion plays into this and a lot of things get thrown out. But I can wholeheartedly tell you that the immediate consideration is about trees in the Menlo Oaks neighborhood. We took lots of steps to massage the plan. We worked with the county arborist. So I do want to put people at ease that you are represented by the county arborist. He actually, along with the planner who actually switched and Summer had taken over, we redesigned a little bit. He suggested the pine to be removed. He didn't see any significance of that one staying because of its health. So we shuffled around access with the driveway, but the focus was greatly on the frontage and the redwoods to preserve that. As, as been said, the, the Spanish fir is not in the way and the owner, I think, greatly considered it. But we also focused on the health of those redwoods. They are growing, they are thriving, but the bottom of that canopy is impeding each other. So they're both kind of clashing at the bottom, making it kind of a disproportionate look. With that said, that's really, that was the intent for that one. It wasn't just to kill it for the heck of it. It was to preserve the redwoods, which in our opinion had much, much greater value. Another thing that, that happened with the rest of the footprint is, as you can see, it's very evident in, in this slide, which showed the footprint that working around, you know, the, the reference was the blank sheet of paper. Once we got that footprint and, and every, and we had this tiny sliver to work with, it really, really became evident that that oak is, is just really, really in the, in, in the developments way to, to put that building there. We worked around the large one and again with the county arborist at his recommendations, we moved even planting away. So great amount of consideration was taken, taken for all of this. We spoke with the neighbors. The pool unfortunately cannot go anywhere else. It is in its legal rightful spot. Everything really got placed, you know, I keep hearing that nothing was thought through. What we ended up with is not where we started or where, where things we can go. Variances we know are nearly impossible and add a tremendous, tremendous strain to the project's approval. And it's very, very difficult to get them, as has been mentioned. As far as replacements, I can tell you from a contractor's standpoint, that is something a planner comes out, checks, verifies, and you will not get final inspection from planning. Therefore, you will not get final inspection occupancy certificates from building until this is checked. More so, Mota frequently visits and we are in contact with, with not just Mota if need be, but the project arborist who is on retainer to supervise any and all pruning, any hand digging in around roots. So the healthcare plans are very much so in place and part of these plans, as Summer stated. All of those, the arborist plan is in an approved set of plans closely looked at by planning, also by the landscape folks that checked our plans now, which is called Wheelo. So I, I would just like to say, any of our track record projects have done very, very well with not just the preservation, but also the new planting and the new life. So despite the county not having a program to check past that inspection that they got planted, more than happy to show all of those four or five projects that have been built. As a matter of fact, Ms. Horst at one point said, "I wish you built every home in this neighborhood because you guys did such a good job after the first two." So in closing, I would just like to say, we've done a lot of consideration and we will certainly take care of this property's trees, just like we have in all the other instances in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I will next call on Paul or Pat Walker, followed by Casey. Mr. Walker, please accept this information, invitation, unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Good morning. I appreciate the time that the commissioners have spent in preparing for this meeting. Our county's significant tree ordinance states that the preservation and replacement of significant tree communities on private and public property is necessary to protect the natural beauty of the area, protect property values and prevent undesirable changes in the environment. I'd like to address the undesirable changes in our neighborhood that I attribute at least a part to the loss of significant trees that the ordinance was meant to protect. My husband and I have lived here for forty-three years, a few doors down the street from this property. Because we are always watching birds in our yards, we notice the birds that we can see now and we notice the birds that we used to see but are no longer around, such as quail, great horned owls and mockingbirds. Now we're noticing that the scrub days are no longer abundant. We remember trying to identify various butterflies and moths in our yard, but now we rarely see any. We haven't seen bats for years. I can't say that the removal of so many mature trees in our neighborhood to make way for larger homes is the reason for the disappearance of wildlife. But the ordinance does point out that the removal of significant trees results in, among other things, quote, "change or elimination of animal habitat, possibly including inhabitants of endangered species," quote. So what's the point of having a significant tree ordinance if the county approves a removal of any tree that a developer decides should be removed in order to fit within a design of a house? Climate change is happening and everyone must do his or her part to address it. Shouldn't a developer also do his part? The developers talked about the property rights of the owner. Well, with property rights comes responsibility. Doesn't the developer have a responsibility to the neighborhood and to the environment to sustain, design a sustainable home and garden? Shouldn't the county do its part? Shouldn't the county exercise its discretion when one of the trees to remove, the coastal live oak number fourteen, is designed, defined by the significant tree ordinance as not only significant, but also indigenous? That's in section twelve point zero one seven. This project is not designed for a known buyer. As such, any potential buyer will have been deprived of the opportunity to have a lovely native oak to enjoy for shade, bird viewing and aesthetics. The oak could have been part of the design. Similarly, a potential buyer will not have the opportunity to decide to use the yard for open space for children to play in or gardening. Instead, the yard will be paved over for a pool and accessory dwelling unit. The county should be aware of how important native oaks are for the survival of the bird population because oaks support many species of moss and butterflies needed to produce the caterpillars that birds feed their nestlings. Finally, in addition to adding value to a property Finally, in addition to adding value to a property, significant trees and particularly oaks reduce noise, absorb rain off, and help reduce energy consumption and air pollution. Each time a significant tree is removed in Menlo Oaks, Menlo Oaks, it affects those of us who live nearby. Thank you.
Thank you. I will next call on Casey. Casey, please accept this invitation, unmute your microphone and begin speaking.
Hello, I'm Casey Franco. I'm a direct neighbor to this property. And I keep hearing that the developer and the architect have reached out to the neighbors. I'm just saying, want to let the commission know that in our case, we have not heard a single thing from the developer or the architect. And in fact, we were not even aware that the trees were going to be cut down until we received a letter from the planning commission. This is partially due to, there's been very little posting at this property. Typically, we're used to seeing the big yellow signs that mark the tree cuttings. And in this case, it's just a small eight by eleven and it's probably fifteen to twenty feet off of the, off of the street. So it was actually not even really noticeable to us until after we received the letter from the planning commission. So it, you know, I think that we've been hearing a lot that they've been reaching out to the neighbors. But I will say, in our case, we've heard almost nothing from this developer. And then regarding the pine tree, one, I think Commissioner Gupta had a question of how long that has been there. I would say that tree is, it's about forty feet tall. And I've owned this property for ten years. It's been, it was mature at the time we moved here. I would guess it's been there for decades. And, you know, I think when we moved here ten years ago, part of the social contract of living in this neighborhood is this neighborhood does have large lots, but it includes a lot of trees and you have to take care of them. We did a full remodel. We didn't disturb the trees that currently live here. So, you know, we'd like to have the commission continue that. And in terms of replacement trees, you know, I strongly feel that twenty-four inch box oak replacements should be the minimum. They're very inexpensive. They're, you know, seven to eight hundred dollars at most. And we really think rather than fifteen gallons, it should be a twenty-four inch box minimum. So thank you.
Thank you. Chair, we have no more hands raised.
Thank you. So with no more. Oh, wait, there's another one.
There's one more. So I do see Janet Benson, Ms. Benson. Please accept this request, unmute your microphone and you may begin.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, I was trying to make this sound good, so I wrote it. Terrible. Oh, I live in Menlo Oaks. My family's been here since nineteen sixty-nine, so it's fifty years. I want to thank Ramona Murray, Judy Horst and Judy Caldwell, who have spoken in favor of maintaining the wonderful trees in my neighborhood. I have four oaks on my property. I must say, it's a pain in the neck because they're constantly raining leaves. It's, it's pretty bad. But I would never, ever consider having them cut down. I agree. I've noticed the same thing. No more quail, no scrub jays. I don't know if that's somehow due to COVID or, or the lack of, or trees being cut down. But it's sad because I enjoyed them. Also, I think that anybody who could afford to buy a house in Menlo Oaks could darn well afford to hire an excellent arborist. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see one more hand. I see Melinda. Melinda, please accept this invitation, unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking.
Hello, I am Melinda. I am actually the property owner of three A three Arlington. And it was around mid last year, I came across this property and walked the property. I mean, we love the neighborhood. The oak trees is what has really drawn me to this neighborhood. So the first thing, you know, we did was, you know, I got Andy on board and we also had Pearl walk this site with me. And to, to just say that to draw a home footprint on a white piece of paper is really not the case. We go through countless hours of revisions, you know, trying to save every tree on this property. And every time I am at the property, you know, I see a neighbor, we always greet. We try to talk to them. So to say that we don't reach out is really hard and we're actually in a pandemic, right? So for us to reach out to an extent is what we try to do. And every comment we get back from the city or from Moda, we address them. You know, we try to accommodate every single request. But given the footprint of the house, you know, we're, we have our hands tied. And we really try to work around with, you know, everybody. And this is really the best that we could do. We have preserved ten trees on this property. There's a total of fifteen. We request to remove five, but you know, we're, we are putting back the one-to-one replacement. So don't think that we take this lightly. I mean, we've spent countless hours on designing this home and, you know, try to make this home as beautiful as it can, you know, and adding in the ADU, you know, putting in the pool. I, I have two kids myself, you know, and I, when we go in and design this home, I mean, I designed it to as if I was living there and how my kids would love to enjoy the pool, you know, having outdoor, enjoying the nature. So it, we do, you know, put a lot of time in designing these homes. Don't think that we, you know, just go in and pop on a plan. That's really not how it works. There's a lot of rules and regulations that we go through and we have to abide by. So thank you, everybody, for, you know, getting on today. And thank you, commissioners, for reviewing this and Moda as well for keeping our neighborhood as green as possible. Okay.
Thank you. Chair, I believe that is our last speaker.
Right. Without further speakers, we will close the public comment portion of this item. And does staff have any wish to speak on any of the issues raised at this point?
I think we'll just be available for questions.
All right. So moving on to the commissioners, let's start with Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. So I'm appeal the questions. There's a lot of this, a lot of this decisions and questions. One of the more, more important questions to answer is, you know, this is appeal of the planning department's approval. My mind, the first question is, did they act appropriately and reasonably? And I just want to get that off the table, that whatever decision they came to, I, I think they acted appropriately and reasonably. They did all the due diligence that was required in their decision, which may or may not be the same as my decision. So I, how I view it, I'll, I'll go by each tree. First one I'll talk about is the Spanish fir. I did walk the property. I did spend some time out there. I took sightlines. I did all sorts of stuff, just, just in a lovely neighborhood. So it was just a great day to be out there and I enjoy the neighborhood. And I've been many times very supportive of the preserving of the trees. What I, my observation first with the fir tree was good forty, forty-five percent of the tree is missing needles. It is missing needles because the fir tree is desperate for light. And that's, that's really problematic. You know, a lot of trees can live with less light. You can't really move the house south toward Arlington. You, you would then start impacting the redwoods. And I don't think, in my mind, you come up with a convincing ad, argument to do that. Taking out the driveway, you're definitely going to make the redwoods happier. They need sixty inches of rain, of rain a year to survive. They are water intensive, which then gets back to, they're going to starve out the fir over time. They're gonna, they're the best sequester of carbon of any tree in the world. They're thriving right now. If they get the water, they're thriving better than almost any tree. So those redwoods will get bigger. They're going to provide more shade. And the fir is going to struggle. It's going to have less water and have less needles. You go to Redwood Forest, you don't find fir, those type of firs underneath it. They shade them out. So within ten, twenty-five years, you're taking the tree out anyway because it'll be dead. Or so poor condition. It's coming out someday. Whether it comes out today, comes out fifteen years from now, I don't care. But it's coming out. That's just the reality of that tree. I do like the plans for making the trees, redwoods thrive. That leaves the tree in the back. Would I love to keep it? Absolutely. Do they, do, could, could I design a house? Yeah, I probably could, but it'd be a whole lot smaller. Even though I would live in a smaller house, you know, you, this was zone for housing. Wasn't zone for larger housing. I've got a five thousand square foot lot. I have planted four oak trees. I planted four oak trees. I know what they can do. I know what the coverage they are. I do everything to fight for oak trees. I can't see any way where what, what development has done when they go and chop the roots, they chop the branches and everything else where these trees thrive. I, 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 yeah, I thought it was appropriate decision. It's not a decision I like making. I, I can't make a, a great argument of keeping it. So I, I'm happy to let the decision of the planning department stay.
That's it. Commissioner Ramirez.
There. I am going to also go right along the same lines as Commissioner Hanson. I pretty much came down to about the same assessment in regards to those two trees. In regards to the Spanish fir, I think that it, it's, it's doing okay now. But I think as time goes by, that tree is going to suffer even more. And also as a consequence, it will make also the redwood trees suffer. And I think taking that, that tree out now will allow for the redwood trees to have a more, more vibrant life going forward. So, but then I also heard the, the applicant saying that they don't mind if it stays. So for me, I think that the tree will deteriorate in health as it goes forward. So if it gets taken out now or in a few years, eventually, I think it will have to be taken out. The, the second tree, the live oak, I think looking at the overall layout and the constraints of the site there, being that this is a corner lot and it requires forty-foot setbacks basically on two sides, it reduces significantly the amount of available space to build on. And so could you build a smaller house? Yes, I'm pretty sure you could. But, you know, I'm, I'm not going to say, you know, what they, they should be building, as long as it meets the requirements of the, you know, of the building ordinance. So I think that if we were to save this tree, we, two things would have to happen. Either you reduce the house significantly in order to stay away from that tree or you have to move the house over to the other side that would encroach into the setback. I'm, you know, very familiar with the area and I think most of the houses around there are very well, you know, far away from the, the front of the streets. And I think that's the character of the area, keeping the houses back. And I think that's something that looks very nice and, and it should stay like that. I would rather see those big setbacks stay the way they are than having to encroach into that area. I would also echo Mrs. Ketchum's sentiment about, you know, making sure that those, the trees get pruned appropriately. And maybe we can, you know, put some strong wording on, on our final decision here. Because yes, they, they need to be, whatever trees are going to stay there, they need to be very well protected. So that's, that's what I have to say on this.
Commissioner Sandores.
Um, you know, I'm just saying that the Spanish fir tree, to my opinion, is halfway there and it will not survive in the future. It's like saying that somebody has cancer and we have to treat it with Tylenol. And, you know, anyway, he's going to die. So I am in full support of keeping significant trees because that keeps us alive, the, the environment, the, the carbon monoxide and everything that saves the clean air and all that. Having said that, I, I think I, I am in support of removing the Coast Live oak tree if we keep the Spanish fir tree because it's fifty percent in good condition with a good pruning and trimming. That will, that will increase the likelihood of keep that, that tree alive for another year, many, many, many years. So if, if we're willing to, to do that, then I'll be in full support. Otherwise, I, I don't think I am supporting this, removing of significant trees. And I'm sure by now you, you know, my, my standpoint when it comes to significant trees. I, I, I don't like that we feels like because of the protection of the property value, we're going to have to chop, chop, chop trees. Because the ordinance says, beauty of the area, protect of the property value and prevent undesirable changes in the environment. And by doing so, we are not preventing undesirable changes in the environment. And, and that's my personal point of view. Thank you.
Commissioner Gupta.
I think my fellow commissioners have made some very good comments. And what Commissioner Hanson said is, this is no reflection on our own planning department's decision about issuing the permit. But my personal thinking is, especially about the Spanish fir tree, that yes, I, I'm actually, I'm looking at the arborist's report with the condition of all fifteen trees. And there are many trees there which are worse than, in condition, worse than Spanish fir. But we are not cutting all those trees off thinking that someday they'll die. So I'm not willing to let go of the Spanish fir tree. Just because we feel that it's, that we may have to do that in twenty years. But twenty years is a long time. We'll do it when time comes on that. So as far as that tree is concerned, that's my opinion. that's my opinion. On the live oak. It, it looks like I, I'm okay with removal of that tree. Yes, it's true that because of the setbacks, especially on the true two street sides, it is, it takes away a lot of area there. And even though the owner is not planning to live there, that's my understanding. But whatever their reason, this is what they are looking for. So I, I'm okay with the removal of that tree. But again, I would like to mention or agree with what Commissioner Ketchum mentioned about not just hacking all those trees which are non, not categorized as significant trees. They should be, what I would say, whatever is the word I'm looking at, is a qualified tree. Arborist or surgeon, whatever the term may be, should be pruning those trees. So that they look, still maintain the character of the neighborhood. So, so that is very important to me. So thi- this is my opinion, and I'm not in favor of removing both trees. I, I will go with only tree number fourteen. That's my opinion.
Okay. I have to say I agree hundred percent with Commissioner Hanson. Not that I'm celebrating that the that this house, which has a covered patio, could not make use of the oak tree to cover a patio, but that's not to be, but it's not really a stellar form, it's not a tree that you look at and say, oh, this tree can't be destroyed, we must build around it and make it the centerpiece, it's not one of those trees. Anyway, so just saying that I agree with removing both trees as staff has said, and the, the pruning, just to be clear that what I was speaking of earlier on about the arborist report. Pruning should be carried out by an arborist, not by construction personnel, no limbs greater than four inches in diameter will shall be removed, and we, and we were told by staff that that would be enforced during the building permit stage, and so my takeaway on that was that was handled. And the as to the Spanish fur declining over time, I, you know, as a, as a person who creates landscapes and cares for them, and you look ahead and you think what is best for this area and you deal with it now, this is not a human being. It's, it's a part of the landscape and the, I think that the, the protecting tree canopy is, is not just about the number of trees or the trunk diameter. It's also about the space required, the trees to mature with good structure in their natural form, where one such tree can provide canopy equal to a tightly spaced growth where they're all struggling to get their, get light. And that's my reason for supporting the removal of both trees, and so at this point, having listened to your comments, I, I think I would suggest that someone make the motion that's recommended. And then if someone else, and if that is seconded, then what, how, what is the process here? And then someone else may make an amending motion to save the fur tree, at that point, we can vote on the fur tree and then move on. And we can all vote on the main motion, does that make sense? I haven't seen it done since I've been on the commission, but I, I know other bodies follow that order and I think it provides more clarity where you first have a decision on the amendment, and then at that point, knowing that the vote is going, then others may, okay. So may I have a motion?
I'm, I'm willing to present a motion. If Summer, can you post the recommendation, please? So I'm willing to make a motion on, on that recommendation with the exception. You know, it's like that the planning commission denied the appeal and upheld the decision of the community development director to approve the removal of one twenty-two point twenty-inch DBH coast live oak tree under two removal permit. County file number PLN twenty twenty-one zero 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 three two. By making the finding and adopting the condition of approval attachment A of the staff's report.
So that was a motion for one tree, did not specify which tree?
Just removing the, the, the coast live oak tree.
I second.
Okay.
Well, that's sort of the reverse of what I was suggesting, but so at this point, is there any amendments? Does anyone want to amend the motion?
I, I think we should vote on, on this and see if it doesn't go through, then we could make a second motion.
Well, the, the problem with this, I think if, if we just, I don't see how you can make a second motion because you've you've moved on the recommendation and, and you said we're just going to move one tree. I don't see how then you can make a motions to say, let's make the same motion and remove the other tree. I think it would need to be the other way around, I think.
Commissioner Ketchum, if I may?
Yes, please.
From a, from a parliamentary perspective, there is a motion on the floor and a second for that motion. If the chair deems the, the motion in order, then a vote should be called on the motion. If the motion fails to carry a majority of the commissioners, then immediately a new motion is in order. So a vote is held on the motion before the commission now. And then if it fails to get the requisite three votes, any commissioner may then make a different motion. And then if that motion is seconded, a vote is held on that motion.
Right.
Yep.
All right, so please call the roll.
Commissioner Gupta.
I.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
I.
Commissioner Hanson.
Nay.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Nay.
Chair Ketchum.
Nay.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission denied the appeal and upheld the decision of the community development director to approve the removal one seventeen-point-four-inch diam DBH Spanish fir tree and one twenty-two-point-two-inch DBH coast live oak tree under the tree removal permit, county file number PLN twenty twenty-one thirty-two. By making the findings and adopting the conditions of approval of attachment A in the staff, of the staff report.
I will second that.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta. No. Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Nay.
Commissioner Hanson.
I.
Commissioner Ramirez.
I.
Chair Ketchum.
I.
Thank you, your motion passes.
Okay, motion passes three to two with Commissioners Gupta and Santa Cruz opposed. So now
May I suggest something, and, and perhaps Mr. Fox can chime in this? Do, do we have to state that we actually, the first motion failed? And, and the reasons or the, how it went down?
Yeah, I actually think it'd be wise for the, for the chair to make a report of that vote as well. I think the record is very clear, but I think the Brown Act requires that a report of the vote be made as well.
Let me do that now then, my apologies. So the first motion to approve just the removal of just the one tree failed through two to three with Commissioners Hanson, Ramirez, and Ketchum opposed. I think I got that. Okay. Are we all good here on this one?
I think so.
Thank you, everybody, and now we'll move on to the, oh, oh, we're not done. How about, would anybody like to take a five-minute break? Okay, we'll come back at eleven.
Eleven twenty-six.
Eleven twenty-six, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chanda, do you think I should start sharing my screen?
I think go ahead and wait until the commissioners return and the, the timer's off. Because I'll, I'll introduce your item, Joel.
Are we all here?
I believe we're all back, yes.
Okay, so moving on to the next agenda item, item two, will, will staff present?
Yeah, we have item number two, owner applicant, Samatil County Office Sustainability. Location is countywide, project planner for this item is Joel Slavitt and Chanda Singh. Go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm Chanda Singh, I'm a senior transportation planner with the Samatil County Planning and Building Department. I'm really pleased to have my colleagues here from the Office of Sustainability, Joel Slavitt and Julia Melma-Laycock, who helped lead the development of the county's first unincorporated area active transportation plan. A very important planning process and project to help move forward implementation of bicycle and walking infrastructure countywide, including recommended programs and policies. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Joel to present, and Joel and Julia and I will then be available for questions after the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, is everyone seeing the, the full PowerPoint? Excellent.
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners, Director Monowitz, my name's Joel Slavitt, and I'm going to be giving this presentation this morning. So first I'll summarize the background and plan development process, then talk a little bit about the plans, recommendation, recommendations for bicycle and pedestrian facilities and planning-related support program and policies. And then we'll go over some implementation methods, and then Julie and I will be happy to respond to any questions, open it up for discussion and, you know, receive any input you may have. So active transportation refers to self-propelled, human-powered transportation such as walking and biking. Historically, bicycle and pedestrian improvements in the unincorporated county largely have occurred on an ad hoc basis, often in response to specific community requests. Our plan provides a comprehensive, high-level framework to improve conditions for people walking and biking for all our unincorporated counties. The plan gives us the opportunity to address bigger picture issues such as transportation inequities that exist due to a history of underinvestment in certain communities and a lack of facilities that serve all people of all ages and abilities. Implementation of our plan can also help address negative health outcomes resulting from low activity levels and folks that aren't able to go out and, you know, bike and walk. That can also help with climate change, a substantial portion of our greenhouse gas emissions are produced from our transportation sector. So our plan is centered around five main goals. Access to enable people of all ages and abilities to comfortably reach key destinations. Safety to, to eliminate serious injuries and fatalities where possible. Equity to provide equitable access to transportation investments for people of all income levels. Mode share to increase the share of people walking and bicycling as an alternative to single occupancy vehicle trips, thereby reducing congestion and greenhouse gas emissions. And finally, flexibility to create a flexible network that can adapt to changes in our land use and transportation system over time. So the development of our plan took place over, over a two-year period through three phases of work. That included data collection and analysis, the, oops. The development of draft project and policy recommendations, and the development of an implementation strategy along with draft and final versions of the plan. We conducted outreach with each phase of work. We conducted outreach with each phase of work and the plan was developed through a collaborative process. We worked closely with other county departments and external agencies through a technical advisory committee. An example of collaborative efforts included our outreach working with planning staff involved with the Connect the Coastside Plan to make sure our recommendations were generally in alignment. We also solicited input from the county's bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. Community councils, community-based organizations, advocacy groups, and the general public. We're very thankful for all the input we received from stakeholders and community members, including Commissioner Ketchum's. Thank you for sharing your knowledge and expertise with us. So the plan recommendations were shaped by community input from the public's vision and priorities for walking and biking in their neighborhoods as well as technical analysis. Outreach activities focused on reaching people where they are, including a combination of pop-up events at community hubs and gatherings, workshops, and online engagement. Targeted outreach was also conducted to reach specific communities in North Fair Oaks and on the coast side that included groups such as youth and farm workers. When the pandemic shift, we had to, when the pandemic hit, we had to shift from in, from in-person to all virtual outreach, which presented some challenges. But we had an online open house and survey, informal pop-in meetings, and Facebook Live events that were both in English and Spanish, and they were actually quite well received. One of which involved panel discussion with representatives, community-based organizations, and community leaders in North Fair Oaks. So our plan has an extensive bikeway network that accounts for both existing and planned bikeways. Including those identified in other county plans such as the North Fair Oaks Community Plan or the Connect the Coastside Plan. And it also considers plans from adjacent jurisdictions and regional entities such as CCAG's Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. As well as the Caltrans District Four Bicycle, Bicycle Plan to build out a more connected countywide network. Guidance on support facilities such as bicycle parking and wayfinding signage are also included that help provide a more pedestrian-friendly user environment. So this graphic shows the different types of bicycle facilities that are recommended in our plan, ranging from bicycle routes consisting of signage. To separated bike lanes and shared use paths that provide the greatest level of separation from motor vehicles. Our bikeway network recommendations were informed by federal guidance for bicycle facility selection that accounts for motor vehicle volume and speed. Higher speeds and volume generate the need for greater protection to encourage people of all ages and abilities to bike. The recommendations strive to balance community feedback while also considering trade-offs such as limited right-of-way or the potential removal of parking, which would require further outreach and study. So pedestrian recommendations in the plan include general guidance for different types of pedestrian facilities such as. Curb extensions or raised crosswalks. And location-specific safety and access improvements at 11 pedestrian destination areas throughout the county. That reflect both rural and urban contexts with proposed improvements that can be replicated elsewhere under similar conditions. The Fifth Avenue pedestrian destination area from Park to Spring Street in North Fair Oaks is one such example. Proposed pedestrian and treatments include high-visibility crosswalks, curb extensions. ADA ramps with detectable warning surfaces and at the intersection near Everest High School, retaining your rapid flashing beacons are proposed to increase driver awareness of pedestrians. So our plan also includes policy and program recommendations to better promote bicycling and walking, such as the ones on this slide. Which we worked on with long-range planning staff and I'll briefly summarize these. Starting with the connect connections to transit. This policy calls for working with our transit providers and neighboring jurisdictions to improve bicycle and pedestrian access to transit. Which helps address the plan goal of mode shift to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and congestion reduction. Our bicycle parking policy recommendations call for formalizing bike parking standards through the county's parking ordinance or through individual zoning updates. Which ties into the topic of support facilities that can make bicycling more viable as a transportation option. Our transportation systems management policy calls for the exploration of opportunities to incorporate bicycle and pedestrian facilities. As part of mitigation to reduce the impacts of additional trip generation and vehicle miles traveled associated with new development. Whether this be through the use of CCAG's land use transportation demand management policy update process for local agencies. Or changes to the way traffic impact analysis is conducted using vehicle miles traveled as part of new sequel requirements. On a related note, while there are a number of ways to obtain funding and implement active transportation facilities, which I'll touch upon briefly in the next slide. Our plan calls for the consideration of a policy for new development to build or contribute fees towards bicycle and pedestrian facilities where a nexus exists. And to consider the inclusion of requirements possibly as part of zoning district updates. So it's important to note again that this plan serves as a high-level first step to guide the county's investments in bicycle and pedestrian projects and programs. Examples of implementation opportunities include requiring new facilities or in lieu fees as mitigation for new development as noted on the prior slide. Coordination with related projects from other departments such as our Public Works Department to combine active transportation elements such as. Bicycle lanes with road resurfacing and reconstruction projects to achieve economies of scale. And applying for external grant funding to implement projects. The Office of Sustainability will be working with other county departments such as Public Works and Planning. As well as its external funding partners such as Caltrans and CCAG to implement plan recommendations. Earlier this month, we met with planning staff to start a conversation and how our departments might collaborate on things like development review. Zoning ordinance updates and community planning efforts to help ensure that bicycle and pedestrian best practices are incorporated. So we've been proactive with coordinated efforts to help implement our plan and some of the examples can be seen up on this slide. We recently received a $700,000 grant award from the Transportation Authority this past fall. To help with the implementation of the Santa Cruz Alameda de los Polgus. Corridor improvements project which proposes a road diet and a series of pedestrian and bicycle improvements within unincorporated West, West Menlo Park. An approximate $250,000 grant award from Caltrans from its Highway Safety Improvement Program earlier this month. For pedestrian and bicycle crossing improvements is the Safe Roots to School project. That actually improves access to schools in Broadmoor, San Mateo Highlands, and Elvernada. There's ongoing coordination for the inclusion of bicycle lanes on Fifth Avenue as part of planned street repaving work later this summer in North Fair Oaks. And then also a multi-department effort that led to the submittal of a Caltrans. Planning grant proposal for a new bicycle and pedestrian grade crossing. Of the Caltrain Railroad tracks in North Fair Oaks with bicycle and pedestrian connections to destinations on both sides. And Caltrans actually will be announcing its funding awards later this summer. We did get some positive feedback from the District Four staff and are keeping our fingers crossed on that one. So this is the contact information for how both Julia and myself can be reached. We can also be reached through standing. Planning staff for any follow-up after. And with that, we'll open it up for any questions, discussions, you know, input you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's start off with questions from the commissioners. Commissioner Hanson.
Um. Okay, that's the morning. Good morning. Um. My very first question is, what do you want from us?
Sure. Um, so I mean, the purpose of this presentation today was one to help inform you if you're not already aware of our plan. And whatever thoughts you may have, particularly I think in regard to some of the. Program policy recommendations that are, are planning related in nature. Just to hear whatever input you have, because one of the things about our plan is it's, it's not a final place. You know, implementation is going to be ongoing and evolving. So we're, we're more than interested to hear whatever you have to share with us.
Okay, well, thank you. First, it was a very extensive report. Took a lot of reading. And sometimes even rereading to even fully get the impact. But I'm sure. A week from now, I'll say, oh, but thank you. You filled in a lot of things I did not know was going on. I think most of the things in there are reasonable and to be expected. The uh. No. I couldn't figure if you're trying to be active or passive in these recommendations or both simultaneously. And. Just my own nature is more active than passive. You know, I'm always looking for, okay, what can we do? Get things done this. Also, instead of waiting to come to my neighborhood, this is what we're going to do first and it may go through your neighborhood. And you know, the other way around. I see that we talked about on all the different neighborhoods and on the base side, they're very disconnected. Very different demands. The impacts are not equal, you know. Because some of the areas are just too small, some of them have different dynamics than North Fair, from North Fair Oaks to Broadmore. They're very, very different. And so. You know, there is nothing that ties everything together. The uh. You know. As a planner of big ideas and stuff like that, I would say, if I look at the coast side. I say this is an opportunity to tie everything together for a great recreational trail that goes along the, all those flat table lands. How do we bring them together? That is also a good economic value. If you're staying at a B2B or a hotel out there, you know, get a bicycle and bike the area, walk the area, explore the area. You know, make, make it a destination place for recreation, stuff like that. My times of still going out to coast side, I see a lot of people who, let's say, use bikes or. Really a farm workers going from one location to another. You know, their demands are very different. I would narrow down the focus so something actually gets done and we see some, something move along the line. On the base side. I think it's very critical. We're reading a critical place where. Our one is going to disappear. If we, we don't do something about it, the state's going to step in and make everything R2, R3, or whatever they're going to do and make things denser. There's just no way El Camino or Middlefield or, or um. Yenber Serra can handle all those traffics moving north and south. I would say, you know, transportation to the regional nodes for trains or buses. Should be our priority there. You know, we have a good passive network for recreational stuff. I have tried to commute to Stanford when I used to work. And going along El Camino was extremely frightening, whereas trying to get through Atherton was very frustrating. But I could do it, but it's, you know, wayfinding is very different. I would say just set a priority for me, you know, like emphasize getting everybody to the trains. You know, how do we do that? So that's, I really liked what you have. I will use it as a reference going forward. Month. I thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Well, it's pretty hard to follow up that act right there, Mr. Hanson. Overall, I'm going to say that to me, I mean, going through this report, you know, it's like the, the ultimate wishlist. If we could, you know, really develop and bring all this to fruition, it would be amazing. I'm not sure that I can think of, you know, what else I can tell you that you should add into that. You know, other than, let's try to implement it and try to find the funding. To make sure that a lot of these things happen. And I, I like the way that, you know, you've already prioritized. Quite of these projects that should start, you know, to happen as soon as possible. Over the years, I've been involved here in North Fair Oaks. I was involved in the, the general plan and you touched on all the things that we wanted. As far as transportation, bicycling, walking and all that. And that's coming to Middlefield and El Camino's, you know, sooner rather than later. But this seemed that the whole thing, I mean, I know about like up my area, but I never knew exactly, you know, how much broader. We needed to go out. I mean, overall, you know, you always wish that you could go to the coast and get on your bike and go around. But you realize that it's kind of dangerous and when you have a family to bring them along, it's not the greatest thing. But this would be great, I mean, to implement this throughout the region. And I remember reading on, on some of the comments that somebody was saying, would it be nice if you could actually attract the Tour France? To come over once we had something like that developed. I think it would be nice. But the main thing is to. To give the communities, the different communities, what they need to be able to get out and, and exercise more. You know, so we, we just went through the pandemic and like Redwood City implemented the, the safe streets to walk. And that was great. But I thought it lacked. There was no enforcement. Uh, you know, and it actually thought that in the end, it even made it unsafe. Because people still didn't really understand and didn't respect. A lot, a lot of the signs that were placed in the middle of the streets. And a lot of cars were still trying to go too fast and swerve around those things. So it was kind of uh. You know, a, a good exercise, but definitely something that needed more. Implementation. But uh. Overall, I mean, as I walk around, I tend to walk quite a bit here in my area. Sidewalks, improving the sidewalks in this area is huge. And then make it continuous. Because I think my area has probably one of the highest. Bicycle communities, bicycling communities, because a lot of people here, they don't only do it for recreation. I mean, they really do it because they needed to go to work. So it's extremely important that we have better facilities so that they can move around safely. Over the years, I've, I've witnessed. Some accidents on Middlefield and El Camino. And that, a lot of them have been fatal, unfortunately. I think some of the stuff that has been implemented over the years with the crossing lights and stuff have helped significantly. Some of the signage, I think it's uh. Even sometimes dangerous because I, I see on Middlefield, we have. The blinker, blinking lights for when people are going to cross. But we have to be careful because sometimes if the sun is at, at a, you know, about to set or in the morning and it shines directly on the, on the drivers. Driving up and down, you can't see those lights. I would like to see something. More prominent with, you know, like lights way up above where the. With the, with the drivers can actually see those things. So, like I said, I think if, if we could implement what you guys have put forward, that would be. Amazing. So, and I'm really looking forward to, to seeing some of these things, you know, come to fruition and, and enjoy in the community. Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Santa Cruz.
Okay, um. Just one question for the person who's presenting. Are you guys working closely with the San Mateo Transportation Metropolitan Plan? Something like that. I don't recall exactly the name of it, but Supervisor Canepa was sending an email about. The Transportation Metropolitan Plan that work in combination with Sun Trans and, and bicycling and lines for walking. Walking lanes or something. Are you familiar with that? Are you familiar with that?
Yeah, are you referring to the C CAG Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan update?
No, it's something like San Mateo Transportation Metropolitan Area that deals with the access for buses. And bicycles and things like that, then Supervisor Canepa was. Addressing and talking about it, maybe, maybe eventually you can. Reach to 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 him and and sort of like, you know. Give you an update because it looks like. They're working on the same effort that you are referring to right now, which is biking. Line line lines and then, you know, pedestrian sidewalks and all kinds of things. In relation to a community busing and accessibility to the to the coast side and things like that.
Yeah, I know there's a couple of different planning efforts that are ongoing at the San Sato County Transit District and both Julie and myself are plugged into them, actually John, but do even. With. There's actually one that we were in a meeting just the other day, it's the Alternative Congestion Relief Transportation Demand Management. Technical Advisory Committee to kind of determine how how those funds are going to be spent. There's one that actually specifically. Dealing with the bus system, the Comprehensive Operational Analysis called Reimagine Sam Trans. So we are, we are in in touch and coordinate regularly with with staff at at the district.
Oh, that's great, because then then it would be nice because it would be more effective. And I was thinking and not duplicating effort. And if there is something that is going on right now in San Mateo. And maybe you can check with Supervisor Canepa and then we'll give you an update. I think it would be a good idea. He's a very active. Supervisor involved in the interest of the community and it will be good. I think he would love to hear about what you're presenting right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Gupta.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation, Joe. So. Like. Commissioner Hanson said, it's it's a big lot of information. That we had to look at. So from my understanding, this was a two year. Two year program.
It's when it kicked off, yes, it took about two years.
The time it kicked off, right? And Board of Supervisors have approved it, right?
Yes, in February of this year.
Okay. So what I'm looking at is. It says something about. I'm interested in what is the demographics of this unincorporated. Area of the county like. How how many? People can really take advantage of some of the things that we are proposing here, especially the bike. Riding and what was the other thing you had? Walking, is walking part of it?
Yeah, so so we cover both the bicycle element as well as the pedestrian or or walking element. And and actually, you know, when we talk about active transportation, it's any kind of self propelled. So whether you're roller skating or. On on other devices, you know, using your legs. You know, that that can be considered active transportation. But in regard to the demographics, I want to say. And Julie, correct me if I'm if I'm wrong, the percentage of folks today. That are biking and walking, and this is based on census data, in the unincorporated county is just a few percent. I mean, I know, I think it's like between one and two percent for bicycling and a few more percent for for walking. Our goal. Is to provide a better built environment. To encourage people. I mean, a lot of people just don't feel safe now. In fact, one of the, you know, some of the comments that we heard going through the process were were that, you know, concerns about speeding traffic. You know, there's not sufficient lighting, there, you know, better crossings are are needed. And so if we're able to provide the infrastructure. To better support biking and walking, there is. A very strong possibility, we can actually increase. That that tiny percentage of all the trips that are made in the county now. And there's a lot of benefits, you know, as I pointed out from that as well, you know, whether it's, you know, reducing congestion. As well as greenhouse gas emissions. So yes, we do think that we can make a difference. And. I think. I I think that our plan actually proposes something in all the unincorporated, you know, geographies. It just doesn't focus on one specific area, so there's something for everyone. And and I know, I think one of the comments I heard earlier, and and I agree, it's a challenge. Some of the county pockets are relatively small. And you don't have a very large, you know, contiguous area. But we've actually taken efforts to work with our adjacent jurisdictions. Like when we're proposing a bikeway, for example, we look and see where the bikeways are on the in the adjacent jurisdictions, because we know trips just don't stop at jurisdictional boundaries.
Exactly, exactly, yeah, I totally agree with that. And in terms of. I don't know if I'm using the right words. Or right terminology. But in terms of the population of these unincorporated, of the unincorporated area. In terms of age group, what have we? You must be having some idea of the numbers as to what percentage of people are over sixty five. Who who may not ride a bike, right? You are you with me in terms of, I'm looking at. I can classify it under demographics, but what I'm looking at is the age groups. What percentage of people are in certain age group where they could go on a bike? What percentage are not?
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off, Mr. Gupta, please go ahead.
No, that's what I would like to know.
Joel, I don't know if you have the the demographics by age available off the top of your head. I do not. But one of the, one of the goals of this plan is to really to provide infrastructure that ensures that people of all ages and all abilities. Can either ride a bike to get where they need to go or or walk. And when I say walk, I mean, I'm, you know, we're also referring to rolling in a wheelchair, making sure sidewalks are. You know, sufficiently wide and have the proper curb cuts and, you know, flat surface. For anybody, you know, by any means to to walk or roll on them. And so I I absolutely duly noted that not everybody. You know, may have the ability necessarily to ride a traditional bicycle. Of course, there are, you know, kind of recumbent bikes and everything, but what we would like to do through the implementation of this plan. Is at least allow the opportunity for people of all ages and abilities to ride their bikes or walk to where. They're going and I I wanted to follow up very briefly on on your last question about. Sort of the the demographics of unincorporated area. And as Joel mentioned, right now with the census data that we have. Which, you know, we see maybe one or two percent biking and walking. And I think the really important caveats with the census data is that, one, not everybody fills out the census and, two, the census data only captures. Commutes to work. And there are so many other trips that we make on a daily basis to go to the grocery store, childcare, school, you know, a friend's house. All of these other trips that typically happen in our in our own neighborhoods. And as Commissioner Ramirez mentioned, you know, North Fair Oaks, there are really high rates of walking and biking to make daily trips to get to work and other other destinations. And these we found just weren't really captured in the census data. But ultimately, the goal is to make it safe for people that are already walking and biking. And then make it safe for those that may not have considered it previously, but then upon seeing, you know, separated bike lane or continuous sidewalks. You know, then kind of reconsider walking or biking as an alternative to driving.
Okay.
Does that answer your question about the age of age? The demographics?
To some extent, yes. But what I'm looking at is, I read, it said, there's a sixty five thousand. Population in two thousand seventeen, that was the number. That was there, right, in the unincorporated San Mateo County. So so out of these sixty five thousand people. How many? What percentage are capable? Of making use of these plans that that you have put put together?
I think that's probably a difficult question to answer, and I think the bottom line is. There's more people that are capable that are not using it.
That are not using.
What that margin is, is it's hard to say. But I I have a feeling it's a pretty strong extent, and I think we all probably have our own personal stories around that. About having kids or grandchildren who would bike to work if it was safe to do so. Or, you you know, even in the older generations who maybe are actually in walking distance to the library or some cultural center that they like to visit. But they had really had, don't have a choice but to get in their car out of safety concerns. So I think. Yeah, it's they're really trying to capture the broad spectrum and make it. Available for anyone using any means and, you know, in addition to wheelchairs, scooters, I mean, there's some cool motorized scooters out there these days for elderly folks and. You know, when. Especially in under this pandemic, we've realized the benefits of being able to get outside and do things other than in your car. And so whatever we can do to facilitate that, I think is a good thing.
Okay. Okay, so I I also looked at some of the information about. The bike paths. Bike collisions. Sorry, those are just my notes. So. So this this was a two year program, is is that? Do I have it right?
So it took two years to develop the plan. But in terms of implementation, it's much longer than that.
Much, okay. And are you moving forward with? Implementation? Part of any anything in implementation?
Absolutely. In fact, we didn't wait until the plan was approved, actually. There are grant funding opportunities, like for example, yeah. Probably the one of the biggest sources out there are grants. And, you know, they they become available at certain times of the years and and certain. Grants fund certain programs, so if we wait. There may not be another opportunity for a certain type of grant program for like another two years or so. So when when opportunities become available, we we jump on them and we have this like interdepartmental staff working group that get together. To review different grant opportunities when they become available. And then we kind of look at our plans, see what projects are recommended. Our active transportation plan actually does have a series of prioritized list of projects. And we see what might be good match and then we go after them. So I think, yeah.
Okay.
Actually, I'm glad you raised that, Joe, because I think, you know. The relationship of these various plans, because this commission sees a lot of them and how they integrate together and how we coordinate the implementation. Sometimes might feel like a black box, but I want you all to know that. Yeah, this team and others, including Public Works and County Manager's Office. We're all working together to make sure that these plans are not only consistent with one another, but are being implemented in a coordinated coordinated manner.
Okay, so because I see this started beginning of two thousand nineteen. Which was pre COVID time, right? And a year later. Did your direction change in terms of what? What your focus became? When COVID hit us?
So I think the end goal was the same. I think the way we went about our outreach definitely had to change, right? Because. We were doing in in person outreach at the beginning of the plan and we were able to meet with people informally, you know, like in booths and tables. At different events where people go. Then all of a sudden, when the pandemic hit, we couldn't do that anymore and everything became virtual. And it did provide it, it it, there were challenges associated with that in one respect. For those that actually had, you know, discretionary time and they're working from home, they don't have to go out. To a a community meeting at at night or something. It's very convenient for certain people to to hop on. To their, you know, laptop or computer and attend a meeting and and provide input. However, it's not like that for everyone. There are a number of, you know. Communities like lower income communities where they may not have the same level of access, and so that becomes very challenging. Although one thing we did learn, you know, going through the process is that. Particularly if you want to get input from from all the different communities out there that. Working with a community based organizations and nonprofits who actually provide services for those in need is a way to actually reach out and get input. From communities that may historically be underrepresented. But it's also important that, you know, we recognize that. These organizations, particularly during the pandemic, they got their hands full and their and their challenge, so we have to be mindful of, you know, what capacity they have. But also that it's important that when you we do work with these groups that we also compensate them. And the Office of Sustainability actually has an on call. List of community based organizations now that we can actually work with. To make sure that we're able to to reach out and get input from communities that you may not necessarily hear from otherwise.
Right, right, yeah, no, that's that's great. No, this is. This is good work. I think it's a good starting point for the future. Directions. And and how long, is there a date or? Some idea you have, how long is is the plan or or would it all depend on how, when? Certain things take place?
You know, I'd love to be able to tell you that within five years, our recommendations will be implemented. But I can't, unfortunately, I would say it's. Yeah, there are going to be some things that we're we are able to do. And fortunately, actually, with like the the current administration, there's a lot of money that's being dedicated for infrastructure, so we look forward to, you know, some of those opportunities, but realistically. I'd say to, you know, build out what's in our plan could easily be, you know, twenty plus years.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, this was a big document, so. I have picked up pieces from there, then that's where my curiosity is coming from. But thank you so much. Thank you so much for putting this together. Like Commissioner Hanson said, we'll think of questions later on, but. But that's that's how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. So my comments coming from the coast side. I know the Mid Coast Community Council was unable to fit you on their agenda last fall for. Your final draft and basically. There was a challenge because. This project coincided with the. The the riot final rollout on connect the coast side, which everybody's mind was on and it's sort of like, well, what is this other thing? Well, you know, and then focus back on the on the bigger item and also. Particularly last fall, the. Everybody was all upset because suddenly. Out of the blue, the Meteor Creek Coastal Trail Bridge was closed and the. Detour was unsafe and how would that be resolved? And that was what the clawed up the mid the mid coast council agenda so that they could not. Hear you or comment in detail on the proposals for the mid coast. The I I I would say that the, from the beginning, your overarching goals and and the. Different treatments that you're looking at are great and it's wonderful to be undertaking this and particularly. And particularly, you know, as I first saw the project announced, I was thinking, you know, because we have had planning projects over here, and I'm thinking maybe the Bay, Bayside to start for this, and, and the conditions are so different. And so, and I haven't reviewed those other than just sort of from a distance, because I'm, but, so, so on the TAC, was there anybody on the TAC from the coast side? Or the, the ATP Plan Team that conducted walking audits on the coast side?
So thanks for the question, Commissioner Ketchum. Joel Claire, before retiring, was on, on the TAC and joined us for the, the walking and biking tours that we conducted on the coast side. And so was Sam Hersberg from the Planning Department, who had a really intimate sort of understanding of what the, the trail plans, you know, throughout the county are. And the Trail Master Plan remains a, a separate effort from this plan. This, this plan is primarily geared towards bicycling for transportation, although it's, it's clear that on the coast side, you know, any, any sort of bike trail or bike facility could be used for both recreation and transportation. So there is a lot of overlap. But does that answer your question about? We also coordinated throughout the, the process with, with Chanda and Katie and Steve and Joe to make sure that our recommendations aligned with those in the Connect the Coast Side plan.
So, yeah, I just, I mean, I wanted to add that I think Carleen Foldenhour also participated in a walk audit, right? Is that correct?
Is she from the coast side?
She's the State Forest School Coordinator, coordinator based out of Fairlawn View in Montero.
Okay. Well, so, the Connect the Coast Side, I, I served on that TAC when it was active. And then Plan Princeton had a steering committee with local stakeholders that met throughout that. I guess it was active for two, two years or so. And to get that local input, especially for outside consultants and all, is, I mean, I submitted written comments in March twenty twenty and in November twenty twenty substantive comments. And other than acknowledgement of receipt, there was no dialogue like, you know, I really, to compare with Connect the Coast Side, you put out late summer, early fall, a document, a response to comments. And basically, it was so clear. You said, here's what we heard, and here's what we will change or here's what we'll do. So you say, okay, they heard that comment, they decided not to do it, or they decided to do it, or whatever. You had, and you, you felt like you were heard. And I did not feel like I was heard. And I, and the, basically, the, my mailing address is Moss Beach, but I live in the greater Princeton area as defined by Plan Princeton. In twenty-nine and twenty-ten, there was a Midcoast Park and Rec Committee. Sam Hersberg met to a community group, walking the route of the coastal trail through Princeton, talking about what needs were, making recommendations. I was a co-author of that report, was adopted by the board in twenty-ten. Then we had the Plan Princeton Steering Committee. We had circulation locks with local stakeholders and county staff. While I was on the MCC, I reported, there was a street sign right at the corner, Prospect and Capistrano, where the tsunami sign was too low on the pole and you'd hit your head on it, you know, and it reported that. And, and, and we, we asked for red curb painting on the, on the outside, the, there's parking bays and then the the outside curves, people would, because there's a real parking issue there, and people would park there and block traffic. We got that addressed. We, I advocated for Princeton Street and Coastal Access Improvements with Supervisor Horsley took up and, and had, there's an area there, but, but, the, just specifically speaking for Princeton, which is the area I know, this plan does not provide community-driven vision. And the, it's, it's very limited. And, you know, it's, it's, what do they call it? A pedestrian priority destination? And the destination is Maverick's Event Center. And the proposed improvements are specifically at that intersection and at the intersection confronting Old Princeton Landing. And, and just the, I know these may seem like petty things. And I'm sure they are compared to the probably wonderful improvements planned for the Bayside, but, I, I even provided the traffic counts, the turning movements at that intersection where there's a proposal for a new stop sign, making it a three-way stop, showing that this intersection is just a lot of traffic turning that way in the, you know, and, and that it doesn't need a stop sign. And, and if this is for pedestrians, this was proposed for pedestrians. Well, fine, you put a crosswalk, but, you know, there may be people coming out of the bar at certain times, the day or night, that want everybody to stop, but the flow of traffic going through there to the neighborhoods is twenty-four seven. And it just seems like a crosswalk could be better. And I could not make any impact in my comments, other than the final version said, consider adding this near-term stop sign. And I just, and then also added in to formalize the conversion of the parking spaces in front of Princeton Landing to outdoor seating, as though the people visiting the area did not know that that bar restaurant has a large outdoor patio area in the back. And that these two parking spaces are their only off-site parking, which as I mentioned earlier, is we kind of start for street parking. So, it's just, my, my concern is, like I say, these are small things. But it just represented to me that the situation was not understood. That to put, to put crosswalks and curb ramps where there are no curves or sidewalks, it's, it's, it just represents that there was no depth of understanding at all. And the concern is that even though the report says there will be opportunity for public input when the implementation is worked on. Well, how will it be any different than it has been so far? And, and with DPW, this comes back to the, I had sent an email Monday about recent development on Princeton Avenue where these huge above-ground water connections were using up over half of the, the area where people might walk outside the traveling and then landscaping. And presumably, there were encroachment permits from DPW. And so that leaves people walking in the street, like you have to walk in the street, certainly don't need a crosswalk at the corner, but, it's, it's this feeling of out of control, the, for local people who have been involved in these issues and providing input in these issues, providing the local information for the reports that somebody somewhere is going ahead with these plans. And the next time I come through, it will have been changed.
I, I hear your concern, Chair Ketchum, and would like to attempt to address it. So, I, I think that this active transportation plan really took on a lot, looking at the entire unincorporated area. And I think that, you know, the, the likelihood that they would get it right at every, you know, corner in the community is pretty small. And so there's likely to be mistakes, but not to say that they're small because they're important to people like you and to everybody who needs to get around. So these, we, we want to get it right. And I would say that this first pass is not the last pass. As you know, we really need to wrap up Plan Princeton. And Plan Princeton will provide the specific blueprint for development of the area. And we'll take the guidance provided by the Active Transportation Plan. And we'll relook at the comments that were submitted. And we'll nail down what is really right, both in Plan Princeton and in the permitting process that will need to accompany these projects. So, you know, I, I'm not discounting the fact that we probably could have done a better job of closing the loop with you and maybe others on some of these issues of local concern. But I just want to assure you that, you know, it's not the end of the story. We will not proceed with blinders on. We will continue to take feedback. And, you know, like I say, this ATP really took on a lot in terms of geographic area and issues. And I think there's plenty of opportunity moving forward to perfect that as we look at specific intersections and specific community needs, which are going to be very different based on where you are. So, I, I don't know if anybody, if Chanda or anybody from Sustainability wants to add to that, but I, at least, I think as a county, we're committed to making sure we get it right in the end when it comes to planning of project implementation.
I just wanted to, you know, share that I totally agree, Stephen. Joel, Julie and I work together almost every day. And I think a big part of our conversation was that Connect the Coast Side was ongoing, and we work with Summer as well to sort of understand the context and where Plan Prince, or sorry, yeah, where Plan Princeton was and its planning process to try and get as much that was definitive sort of in the draft. But I think the, the ATP is at a, a high level and sort of based on, you know, very specific kind of conceptual engineering standards around what is important for pedestrian safety from a transportation perspective, which is sort of the intent and thrust of where a lot of the recommendations came from. But I think part of what's very clear and we've, we are working on now is that almost, I mean, pretty much every project is going to need to go through a separate detailed planning, design and engagement process, which is why we've been trying to work internally to understand when will be the right timing to do those, what will be the funding sources that will cover them? You know, what can be done through what avenues to make sure that we revisit some of the, the things that we've heard from community through Connect the Coast Side, Plan Princeton and other local planning processes. And as Joel has already said, there's these other planning processes that are going on aside from, you know, the ones that the county's leading, like the District Four Pedestrian Plan, the Caltrans District Four Bike Plan, the MTC, you know, Bike Highway Study. So we're, we're doing what we can to really make sure we're coordinating with other entities to sort of continue to echo what we've heard from stakeholders through our own planning processes and gather what they've heard from their stakeholders. So we're doing a better job of communicating with each other and with, with partners. And, and so I, I, I hear you on sort of not being heard. And I think that I just want to assure you that we have been talking very closely about your comments and other comments that have been kind of overlapping in these different planning processes. Commissioner Hanson.
Okay.
Lisa?
Yes.
Can I follow up on one of your comments?
Oh, yeah, sure.
She talked about pedestrian crossings and stop signs. Stop signs really should never be used for pedestrian crossings, because if you put a pop, stop signs are for access and control of right of way. And if you put a, a stop sign thinking that's, that's good for people, what usually happens, or at least in my neighborhood, you put too many stop signs or inappropriate stop signs, the locals roll through them. Pedestrians think they will stop. And there's just too many close calls. Pedestrians should be, it should be held as a pedestrian issue, not as a stop sign issue for cars, because there's only one loser in that. So, you know, you got, you know, I could just see the accidents somewhere along the way. You know, if everybody's making that one, going, going through, making that left-hand turn, they will continue to do that because they all live locally anyway. And that's what you do.
Thank you. Yes, that was the comment I made. I said, sure, if you want to crosswalk, put a crosswalk, but not the stop sign, please. That's a circulation issue. I just, but nevertheless, it's still there. So, anyway, I just thank you for the opportunity to get that off my chest. Thank you all for coming and presenting. And, yeah, I just hope for, for better communication. I just really felt left out on this one going forward. So that was what, what was it in our instructions here, provide input regarding next step? That's my input. I hope we can have at least, for, for better communication and with the MCC as well going forward. Anybody else have any rapid comments or anything? All right, we'll close that item and move on to the Director's portion.
Oh, no, no, public.
Public comment. Oh, my goodness. Thank you. I got so emotional about that whole thing. I forgot my job.
Thank you so much. We're now opening public comment for item number two. There it is. So I do see one hand raised for this item. It's Janet Benson. Janet Benson, please accept my invitation and begin speaking. Just give me one second. Ms. Benson?
Unmute, sorry. I have a, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I've lived in Menlo Park for most of my life. I have a friend who lives in Palo Alto, and he said to me, he cannot get to Redwood City on his bicycle, Palo Alto to Redwood City. And I drove around and looked and I saw that there's, there were two, there were two opportunities that were lost. Now, when you, when you're in Palo Alto on Alma, you could cross the railroad tracks and end up on Alma in Menlo Park. If you lived there long enough, you know where Alma is in Menlo Park. That's where the Menlo Park Recreation Center is and the swimming pool and all that. That's Alma. You cross over Alma, which is a little different cult because of that gal who got herself killed at that intersection. But bicycle, I think you can get through. There's also, so there's a second street, the second portion of Alma. But where we blew it is that, let's see, it was two things. There's a new construction. It's the Menlo Park Station. That's on Oak Grove. And I don't know if you can get through there on a bicycle. I think not. I think you, I think it's parking, or maybe it's buildings right up to the railroad tracks. I don't know. And then there's another one. And let me see here. If you remember, you all remember where Roger Reynolds Nursery was, I hope?
Yes.
Yes? We all missed it. Well, what do they do? They put in condos. And you, you, you can't get through there on a bicycle. This was an opportunity where bicycles, not people, bicycles could be right next to the railroad tracks, which would be safe. And they could get into Redwood City up to, I think, up to Marshalls. So quite, no, it's not Sequoia Station, Marshalls and a Target and all that. It goes through. But because of these new constructions, it, it doesn't go through. You can't. And I think I wrote a letter somewhere, but nothing, of course, you know, money speaks, right? Money speaks and nothing ever happened. So are you following me? Do you understand what I'm talking about? No?
Who, me?
Anybody, anybody.
I picture Ronald, Roger Reynolds, but not what was built there afterwards, but.
Condos, condos, and you can't, you can't ride your bike through there along the railroad tracks. It was an opportunity that was missed. Everybody else moved here two years ago, right? I hope not, if you're on these boards. Well, anyway, that's about what I have to say. But we, you know, they're, they're bike path opportunities. But I guess we all have to speak up when we realize they're there. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benson. At this time, I don't see any more hands raised.
With no further speakers, I will close the public comment on this item. And now we will move on to the Director's portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Chair Ketchum. Let me just start by thanking everybody in Office of Sustainability for presenting today and for Chanda for collaborating with them on both active transportation project and a lot of other important transportation efforts in the county. So in the interest of time, I'll keep the final items short. We've covered the correspondence we received in Items One and Two. I do not have a study session planned for next meeting. There are two items currently on the agenda. They include a coastal development permit for a new single-family residence on a substandard lot on the coast side, as well as a coastal development permit for San Francisco Garter Snake Habitat Enhancement Project at Butano Farm. as well as a coastal development permit for San Francisco Garter Snake Habitat Enhancement Project at Butano Farms, sponsored by Peninsula Open Space, Open Space Trust. And I'll just update you on what happened at the last board meeting and what's coming up at the next board meeting. So the Planning Commission's action on the Pillar Point RV Park was appealed to the board by the applicant who opposed the additional conditions that were established by the Planning Commission. The board upheld the Planning Commission's decision with one exception, and that is with regard to replacing the existing sign with a smaller monument sign. So they concluded because that sign had been approved as part of a prior project that they thought it should remain. But they supported the Planning Commission's action related to relocation of the restroom building and reduction in the number of RV spaces in order to provide more landscape screening. The next board meeting on May 4th, we have the general plan amendment and zoning amendment for the Sequoia tract update, which you previously recommended approval of, as well as the childcare regulation updates, which you also voted affirmatively to move forward. And just a final comment, I know you'd like to stay up to date on potential reopening plans. Those discussions are occurring at the moment. And it appears as if the county will likely follow the state's lead in looking at June 15th as at least a soft reopening. And, you know, there's still a lot of being discussed and to come about that. But I think one of the things that we'll need to think about and create a plan for is when we want to resume in-person public hearings. So I imagine we'll want to follow the lead of the Board of Supervisors and what the state is doing. And so I don't know what the call is on that yet. But if the commissioners have any thoughts or preferences in that regard, I'm happy to bring that perspective to the discussions as we move forward. So that concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just to your last comment about resuming meetings, I did get a email from a co-sider who had that question and was hoping that the remote participation would still be available, that they really appreciate that. It's a long drive from here. So I appreciate it myself. So there are trade-offs.
Agreed. And yeah, that's the feedback I'm looking for because I think, well, there's many things we'd like and need to get back to normal. There are some things that we've gained from this experience and those good things, I think we should continue to take advantage of. So I think whether we're meeting in person or not, having that remote participation capability is probably a good, so.
Yeah, I find this remote, particularly on the coast side, very beneficial. To me, it feels like I'm getting a lot of interested people who want to be able to be here as opposed to having somebody stand in front of me in River City, say, I have a neighbor who would have liked to attend. You know, now I'm seeing at least 10. The downside is I don't get to see their faces or whether they nod with an issue or don't nod with an issue, you know, I don't, you know, am I reaching an understanding with them, you know, do I need to explain more, explain less, you know, that, that is harder for me. You know, particularly when most of the issues are coastal, I really actually enjoyed the Zoom part.
Can I? Yeah, I'm thinking, so maybe, you know, as we move forward and we can start to get together, that it would be more of a hybrid type of meetings, you know, still have participation online and still have, you know, people come together to the meetings. Because I think that we have, I think we have gained a significant amount of people that can, it's better for them to do it like this. But at the same time, I think we still have quite a bit of people that would like to do it in person. So I think the opportunity presents itself to actually do both. That's what I think.
That, that sounds like a good plan, but we'll see how we move forward with that. Steve, I have a question on the, this mobile home park that came up on Board of Supervisors meeting. So is, does that come back to Planning Commission or it's a done deal?
It's a final decision.
It's a final decision. Okay. So, okay, understood.
It's payable to the Coastal Commission. So somebody can appeal that, the board's approval to the Coastal Commission, but other than that, it's a final local decision.
Okay, so Planning Commission is out of it now. Okay. Thank you.
Correct. You're welcome.
Is there a way to, Fred mentioned, can't see the public. Is there a way to allow them to share their video? I mean, not to force them to when they're speaking in public comment, but to allow them to. I know the Midcoast Community Council has that, you know, you go either way. It's more of a community meeting kind of a situation.
Well, actually, I was surprised when I tuned into the Coastal Commission hearing on the Mid Penn Housing LCP Amendment. They actually allow the public to show, share their screen and present in person. I, I think there's just a certain amount of risk that we take in doing so. And to date, we followed the lead of the board and I think the determination has been that that risk is too great to offer that opportunity. I think here at the Planning Commission, we've actually been a little bit more liberal in allowing certain people to actually share their screen. But I think there's going to be more discussion of that. As if we do move forward with the hybrid approach, I think that's part of the discussion is, will we allow people to share their screen? Because I do think it makes the interaction a little bit more personal if you can see their face and read their reaction at least to a certain extent. I don't know, Tim, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I just was going to mention what you mentioned, that there is a concern about privacy and misconduct issues that some other jurisdictions have struggled with, not just by members of the public, sometimes by the officials themselves, allowing things to be captured on screen that are inappropriate for public consumption. And the fact that we record our meetings as a form of public record presents some risk that then our only record of a proceeding is one that involves either invasion of someone's privacy or, you know, permanent recording and depiction of someone's misconduct. So we've kind of tried to strike a balance in advising county agencies about how to allow public comment without running afoul of those issues, but it hasn't been easy.
But I would say the book's not closed on that. There, there's more discussions to come, so we certainly keep that in mind.
Okay, I just wanted to, on the, on the subject of the large sign at the RV park, I know, I'm, I'm aware that the planning permit did not have any dimension. Just all it had on the site plan was a location and that the sign itself, dimensions, the style, whatever, were approved during the building permits stage, which ran from 2005 and I think was filed in 2008, but somewhere in there, the sign was approved by staff. And so what I would like to at least look at is how we could prevent that sort of sign from being approved in the future by staff. And basically, when we had this discussion at our meeting in December, I think most commissioners agreed that, I think Fred said, sign like that shouldn't be on the coast side. And, and certainly you were, my colleagues were all in agreement that this, this gateway area was important, the ocean view, the remaining slice of ocean view and all of this important. And I have to say, I don't understand how that sign was approved in the mid 2000s, knowing the restricted view that was left after the Roa Cypress trees and previous development, all that stuff. And so I don't know the, off the top of my head, if there are any height limit, our current zoning, what the size limitation is, what staff is working with, other than just judgment as to.
Yeah, so that was before my time. I can't speak to this sign in particular, but I do know that, you know, in other areas where we're just dealing with a building permit or maybe the discretionary permit was silent about the signage allowed. What we would look at is the signage regulations and they're pretty specific. And I think they're divided between coast side and bay side. And the signage standards would accompany the building permit review by a planner. So, you know, planners are generally spend most of their time on discretionary permits like design review and coastal development permits, grading permits. But they also spend their time doing a review of the building permits that come in either on a project that they worked on, the planning permit or building permits that don't trigger planning permits. And so it would be about the responsibility of the planner reviewing the building permit to make sure that the sign was, number one, consistent with any terms of the discretionary permit. And then number two, that it was consistent with the limitations established by the zoning. So, and the zoning has, you know, general provisions regarding signs. So did that occur? Did that occur properly in this instance? I don't know, but you know, that, that's the process that should have been followed.
The discretionary permits condition of approval says that the design and color of the sign should be to the approval of the director. Nothing about size. And so there's no problem with the design and the color, it's a size and because of the location. You know, if you had on that huge complex that was built, a design around the complex, it would fit. But this is out on the next parcel in an open field in the ocean view. So, you know, I understand the county doesn't ever want to say something was approved, now you have to change it. But I'm just looking forward and want to, if we need to change some zoning or whatever we want, I want to have a discussion on this. Doesn't have to be today or tomorrow, but whatever, I just, I'll put my thoughts together and.
Well, I, I think your observation about the condition of the planning permit is astute in that I think it's important that this commission pay careful attention to that issue in discretionary permits where signage might be a problem in the future. Because I, I think you have the latitude applying the more broad policies of the general plan and the local coastal program to be more restrictive than zoning would otherwise require. So I think you have the power to look at the sign, concerns about signs, their design and location carefully and would encourage you to do so. And we'd be happy to try and facilitate that analysis as we move forward.
So, but, but permits that have been approved. I mean, in this case, like I say, this happened at the building permit stage.
Right. No, I would say we can't go back on discretionary permits that have already been approved. And if we didn't address the concerns about the signs there and we're just basically left with the generic zoning standards. If that's not good enough, then yeah, we should take another look at that because there, you know, there's plenty of projects that don't come to the Planning Commission. And, you know, these concerns about sign designs apply more broadly than just at the discretionary review stage. So I, I think there will be a time and a place to take a look at those sign regulations. But you guys are, have freshly viewed our long-range work plan and adding that to the list would be tough. So in the meantime, I would encourage us to use our, you know, discretionary review authority for planning permits on issues such as these.
So you're saying that the building department, its hands are tied, they have to allow a sign. They wouldn't say, oh, this is against the LCP at that point. They would just approve whatever sign was proposed.
No, so if a CDP has been required, then we're not going to process a building permit until that permit has been approved. Okay, so if the discretionary permit has been granted, the only remaining regulations that can be applied at the building permit stage, in addition to the, you know, building regulations are the zoning regulations. And so that's when the planner who does the plan check of the building permit application would look at first, were there permits associated with, conditions associated with discretionary permit that I need to address in my review? And if not, what's required by zoning?
So it's just the square footage and the height. And so apparently our CCR zoning allows a 22-foot tall sign right in the ocean view.
If it was not prohibited by the coastal permit, that's true. I mean, unless the planner got it wrong on the plan check and there was an error by staff, I don't know.
Yeah, I had asked staff if they have a copy of that whenever that sign was approved, but I haven't heard back.
Okay, well, you know, all it would be, would be a sign off by the planner saying, yes, I've reviewed the plan and it conforms. There would be nothing, there would be no, you know, other than the building permit being issued, there would be no other record than that. So it would be trying to track down the staff who signed off and determine whether or not that sign off was appropriately done.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? If not, was that a hand?
Yes, Chair Hanson, I mean Commissioner Hanson. Sorry, Chair Ketchum.
So thank you for the email that you sent to the commission. And, you know, almost every year I say we should go out and review what we've done because there are unintended consequences. We don't understand that even though we thought we were doing something good, we didn't understand what was going to come out of it. I just go for my annual here, we should spend some Saturday or maybe, maybe a Wednesday, just go out and see what we've done in the past, what we thought we were going to get, this is what we got. And what can we learn from that?
Well, I think now that we're talking about reopening, it becomes a more viable proposal. So if we're, you know, looking to start reopening more activities and things in June, then I think, you know, maybe late summer, early fall would be a good time to do such an event. And I would also say that there's some great success stories. So it's not just what you didn't expect, but the success of what you did expect. So we can see both.
Yeah, because, you know, we all can learn and, you know, what I think I did is not always what happened. And that sometimes, oh, that really worked and I wish I had done X, you know, you know, stop opposing it or whatever.
Thank you. Is that it? Anybody else? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. See you next time.
Take care.